May announce any items being pulled from the agenda. Mr. City Manager, is there any items to be pulled from the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would like to continue item number nine to the following meeting and table item number twenty five.
Table or continue?
Continue, I'm sorry.
Continue item number twenty five to the next meeting. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. Consent calendar number nine?
Correct.
But twenty five, I wanted to make sure we we're going to set up two by twos with with the unified and this is going to be an item we can discuss two by twos. So don't want to bring it next meeting either until we met with CBI unified and then we have a conversation with them.
We could table it to after that discussion.
Yeah, but we don't need to bring it back next meeting immediately.
Okay, there's a motion. It's been suggested that we continue item number twenty five and that we you want to postpone number nine?
I want to table twenty five and continue item number nine to the next meeting.
Okay, is there is there a second? Is there a motion to do that?
Motion.
There's a motion to and there's a second. Although those are favorite signify by say nine?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we'll get in now to the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. City Manager, will you lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move forward now with proclamations and presentations. We do have a proclamation recognizing Santa Fe Restaurant as the twenty twenty two Small Business of the Year Award recipient for the state of California. And I'm going to ask the family if they can join us up here as well and we will read the proclamation. Counsel, if you can join us now.
Estar acá enfrente. Les queremos dar una una recomendación, pues reconocimiento. La familia Padilla, Omar también tiene que estar acá. Si no eres familia, ya me, ya casi. Well, this is a city of Coachella, California proclamation and where a Santa Fe restaurant in honor Pedro Padilla's success success story embodies the American dream and whereas born in San Juan de los Lagos Jalisco. Esos Los Altos de Jalisco, ya me. Pedro Padilla immigrated to the United States at the age of nineteen in search of employment opportunities through hard work and determination. Pedro gained culinary experience in various restaurants before saving enough to open his own restaurant and business in the city of Coachella. Do you want to help me read this? Or, okay, whereas in in two thousand and eight, Pedro Padilla opened Santa Fe Restaurant in the city of Coachella, adding the Cathedral City location the following year. And whereas Santa Fe Restaurant stepped up to support seniors struggling families and our essential farm workers during the pandemic, the Food Assistant Program that launched saved many residents, senior citizens and farm workers from going hungry. And I personally witnessed that. You guys did a phenomenal job. They were one of the first restaurants in the state who mobilized to provide this type of food delivery service, and they did so without hesitation or expectation of repayment. And whereas Pedro Padilla and his wife, Mirela? Mireia remained dedicated to various charitable charitable causes in the Coachella Valley community and uplifting the dreams of other immigrants. Pedro's generosity as a local philanthropist grew alongside his success as a business owner and helps students obtain computers to keep up their virtual learning studies. His other charitable ventures, including supporting included supporting higher education scholarships and citizen assistance. And whereas on Wednesday, August seventeen, two thousand and twenty two, restaurant owner Pedro Padilla traveled to Sacramento to receive the twenty twenty two Small Business of the Year Award from Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia at an event hosted by the California Small Business Association. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Hernandez, mayor of the city of Coachella and the city council of the city of Coachella, by the powers vested in us, do hereby recognize Santa Fe Restaurant and urge all citizens of the city of Coachella to join us and honor them for their dedication to this community. Felicidades. Thank you. Me gustaría decir unas palabras en español. Creo que todos aquí entienden un poquito. Este este reconocimiento que estamos obteniendo el día de hoy, este reconocimiento podría ser a cualquier papel para muchos de ustedes. Sorry, este. Bueno, antes que nada, gracias, verdad, gracias, Mayor. Gracias a todos los miembros del Consilio Gabriel. Muchísimas gracias. Como les decía, este reconocimiento puede ser un simple, un simple papel para para muchos de nosotros o para muchos de ustedes. Para Pedro Padilla y para todo su equipo, mi familia, todos los los integrantes de Restaurante Santa Fe. Es algo inmenso, algo algo muy grande. La verdad, este este reconocimiento es es el esfuerzo, la dedicación, a la perseverancia de 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 todo ese tiempo de lograr de lograr más que nada. Yo como digo, no, no es, no es solamente un premio, es es la enseñanza a la familia, la enseñanza al pueblo, lo que estamos, lo que estamos dando. Muchos, muchos. Incluso aquí tenemos muchas, muchas personas que que fueron testigos de lo que estuvimos haciendo, pero nos hubiera gustado invitar más personas que que estaban anotados a venir. Lamentablemente, el cupo pues es es un poco limitado, pero este este reconocimiento gracias a una o a varias personas que miran el esfuerzo de de una persona, este reconocimiento puede tenerlo cualquier persona del Valle de Coachella. A muchos negocios, muchos trabajadores, trabajadores del campo, hospitales, cualquier persona lo puede obtener. Y este premio, como lo he dicho, no es solamente para mí, este premio es también para ustedes, para los trabajadores de la ciudad de Coachella. Muchas gracias. Este para mis trabajadores en especial y más que nada mi familia. Muchas gracias.
Este nomás felicidades que estamos aquí hoy celebrando con ustedes. Yo recuerdo cuando estaba el restaurante más chiquillo y mi papá le gusta cantar karaoke, íbamos allá a pasar unos tiempos. La comida está increíble y felicidades ir a Sacramento y gracias por representar al pueblo. Porque cuando estaban allá, aunque era Santa Fe Restaurant, también tenían el nombre de Coachella bien alto y gracias por hacer eso por nosotros y enseñarle a muchas familias inmigrantes e hijos de inmigrantes que el sueño americano, cualquier persona lo puede hacer con perseverancia y con trabajo. Gracias.
Me gustaría que Omar dijera unas palabras, por favor.
Sí, buenas tardes a todos. Muchas gracias primero que todo, Mayor Steven, a todos los miembros del Consilio, a toda la gente que ha pensado en Santa Fe, que ha apoyado a muchos negocios que también estuvieron con nosotros durante la pandemia. Como lo mencionó ahorita, Pedro, yo creo que más que un premio es una enseñanza. Es una enseñanza de los valores de los cuales estamos hechos. No, ya no estamos en que si estamos en fronteras y nacimos aquí o nacimos allá. Creemos que ahorita lo que más falta es enseñarlo a nuestros hijos y a las próximas generaciones que todo se puede lograr. Tener fe en ese sueño, pero no en el sueño americano, en el sueño de ser mejores personas, que es lo que estamos cultivando en restaurant de Santa Fe a través de la familia Padilla y todos los que hacemos posible esto. Creemos que Coachella es un lugar maravilloso para vivir y creemos en la gente de Coachella, so vamos a seguir trabajando para Coachella para que todo esto siga creciendo y esté dando frutos. Mil gracias a todos.
I just, well, they said in English, I want to commit. I want to commend Santa Fe Restaurant for being an example of what community is and all that you have done at a time that was needed. We truly appreciate that we see it and I'm sure your customers see it and I know that your spirit and giving back is is seen and felt and we truly appreciate what you have done for the community.
I'll say a few words as well. I think I've seen, you know, your success. I've seen you grow throughout the year. But I've also seen your business, never forget that you're a part of a community and you're integrated within the community. I've been to your restaurant, the tacos of whatever are really good. I know Eduardo loves them. And and you know, for me, it's important to visit restaurants because there's a feedback loop that happens at those restaurants. And I've been at the restaurant where sometimes I'll say, hey, Steve, you guys are doing good. And sometimes I'll say, hey, Steve, you guys got some problems, you need to fix it. And and that that is, it's invaluable. It's something that we need. Because hearing from all of you about what the community feels is very, very important. And so I commend you guys to for always having your ear to the ground and and to be in the community and to really know what what they need and at the same time being generous. You guys are very generous to to help people, to feed families during COVID and then to, you know, give the students computers. There's not a lot of restaurants that did that. That's and and you guys did, you guys stepped up and I think you were rewarded. And you've been rewarded because now you started in one bay and you've gone to now three bays and then you went to Cathedral City, you know, and I'm hoping you can continue to grow wherever you're going to go. But it is, it is a family effort. Is, I know it's a lot of work. It's not easy. But the attitude that you guys have is is a good attitude where you're you're really mindful of the community. So felicidades, gracias. Y y y esto es algo, pues es lo es lo mínimo que podemos hacer, pero a la misma vez, quiero que sepan que los de ustedes son son un ejemplo en lo que se pueda lograr y a la misma vez en cómo portarse como la con la comunidad. Y muchísimas gracias por por todo lo que están haciendo en la ciudad. Y que viva Santa Fe y hay que comer también allá. Hay que apoyarles.
Family from Los Altos de Jalisco, de allá más o menos, de donde viene Vicente Fernández. Netflix. Yeah, it's a really good show. We'll move on now to a presentation on Coachella IFRP Immigrant Family Recovery Programs. Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Jose Quinones from MAF wasn't able to attend today, but on his behalf, we have Joanna Cortez Hernandez and she'll provide us a presentation on today's kickoff of the IFRP Immigrant Family Recovery Program, previously known as Coachella UBI. Thank you.
Joan, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, can y'all see my screen?
We can hear you and we can see the screen.
You can't hear me?
We can.
Oh, you can. Okay, awesome. And you could see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome, great. Well, thank you so much, city council members, for just having me today and giving me the opportunity to share more about the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program. I'm really excited to just be able to recap some of the details of this program that has been in the works amongst us for some time now and then to also just share updates of where it's at, given given the the launch today. Go ahead and move forward here. So as a reminder, through the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program, the city of Coachella and MAF are partnering to support families in their financial recovery journeys. Through this program, one hundred and forty eligible families residing in the city of Coachella will not only receive four hundred dollars in cash assistance a month, but they will also receive access to relevant financial services, including one-on-one financial coaching and actionable financial education workshops online, all while being able to connect with community members about where they're each at in their respective financial recovery journeys. In order to be eligible for this program, families must be residents of Coachella, must be eighteen years of age or older, have at least one child under the age of twelve who was living in the household in two thousand and twenty one, have a current non-expired government-issued photo ID, earned less than seventy-five K in two thousand and twenty one, or have a total household income below one fifty K in two thousand and twenty one, have filed a two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty tax return, or gave IRS information as a non-filer in two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty one. As a really brief reminder, much of this eligibility criteria is one that we carried over from our National Immigrant Families Recovery Program, which we've also partnered with other local governments like Daily City on. So a lot of this was carried over. I think the the particular eligibility criteria that is new for this program that we're doing with y'all is that first one of being a resident of the city of Coachella. To just go over where we're at today, a timeline of program implementation, really, we started a conversations with y'all back in August of this year to talk through the design of what this partnership and new program could look like. Today, on October twelfth, at nine AM, we launched the new program website that includes a link to the live application. We are going to be accepting applications on our website, through our website, until November eleventh at five PM. That is a cutoff. And we will start sending out notifications to families that are eligible to be a part of the program as early as December nineteenth. And we will start sending out notifications to families that are eligible to be a part of the program as early as December 19th. And we're going to be distributing the $400 in cash assistance beginning in January of 2023. And sorry there, there's like some text here, but to kind of go through our program outreach, we are planning a set of informational webinars that will happen later this month in English and Spanish for Coachella residents. We're also planning to do a ton of social media to just create awareness and direct folks to our webpage. We have a short link for you up there on the screen. And we're, we've been working with the team at the city of Coachella to make sure that we create outreach materials like flyers, like social media, graphics that we can share out with local organizations on the ground to know their community best, right? And are able to connect Coachella residents with the resources and the tools that they need to be able to learn and apply for this new program. And as I've shared, we're very excited that today we were able to finally launch the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program. Our webpage is live, which includes a lot of information, much of which I covered with y'all just now. And it also includes these really unique screening cards to make it easier for Coachella residents to screen their eligibility for the program. So with that, I want to go ahead and just close, give y'all an opportunity to ask questions if you have them. And otherwise, just join me in celebrating this milestone in our partnership and being able to really provide Coachella residents with the support that they need to rebuild their financial lives. Thank you.
Thank you for that information and look forward to continue to get updates on how the program is going. Councils, are there any questions?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I saw the post and all that stuff. So it's pretty exciting. Thank you all for working with our staff, finally being here. It's very exciting to like, you know, seeing after meetings, you know, finally launching this. Any way that we can reach out as council people, reach out, you know, send us an email or, you know, give us a call and see how we can help out in getting the word out. I know you all are doing a lot of work already, but you know, I want to make myself available to be supportive and champion this effort anyway, Ken. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I welcome that and we'll definitely be in touch about how we're moving forward with folks who, how many folks are applying and how many folks we are finding are eligible for the program. So y'all will be hearing much more from us from today moving on.
Remind me when's our expected deadline?
So we are going to close the application on November 11th at 5:00 PM. So the webpage and the application link on that webpage will be live up until that point.
Good. Excited.
Yes.
Thank you. There are no other questions. We'll move forward now on the presentation from Consejo de Federaciones Mexicanas, COFEM, on the proposed Chacoala National Monument. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much, everyone. Good afternoon, council members, city council staff and community members here today. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the proposal for Protect California Deserts. My name is Sandy Hernández Oriana Berros, Conservation Program Manager for the Council of Mexican Federations, COFEM. And as I mentioned, what I want to talk to you today about briefly, in essence of time, is the brief introduction to our proposal. The name of our coalition is Protect California Deserts. Do you want me to do the clicking or? Okay. So the coalition is drafting a comprehensive proposal at this time. And within this proposal, the main component would be to protect lands within the Riverside County and Imperial Counties. These lands are, represent some of the last most intact desert soils that are found here within the Southern California region, represented a wide variety of diverse flora and fauna, in addition to very historical and cultural important areas as well. As you could see by our slide, our coalition is built a little bit different. And it's also addressing some of the issues that have been in the past when it comes to designating national monuments. Our coalition is diverse and with a strong leadership and a long, strong focus in local organizations. One of the main focus of our proposal is to focus on community. And that is one of the reasons why I'm here today. As part of our outreach efforts, we have ongoing outreach efforts to both public and private entities, community groups, and as well as local elected officials. I do want to make it clear and state that while we are drafting in the proposal that we hope Congressman Dr. Roldes will consider supporting, he has not seen the proposal as of this time. The main goal of our proposal is to designate the Chacoala National Monument. And I know not everyone here knows what a Chacoala is, so I did include a picture. So what you're looking at is one of our local Chacoalas that is actually found here in the Mecca Hills Wilderness. He's probably about a year old, give or take. So as I mentioned, the heart of our proposal is to designate a national monument, give or take. We're looking at an area of approximately 700,000 acres that would encompass from Mecca Hills Wilderness down to give or take about 10 miles from the Colorado River with the Arizona border. There's a number of reasons of why it's good to establish national monuments, right? Whether we're looking to protect wildlife, helping to fight climate change, respect cultural, historical areas, but it's also really important for communities such as yourself, I'm sorry, such as the city of Coachella, such as the communities of Mecca and Thermal. Once we designate and with the support of the community members and city council members as yourself, we will be designating the third national monument here in the Coachella Valley, making the city of Coachella and East Coachella Valley communities a gateway community to a new national monument. And there is different, there is different, and there is widely studied, the economic benefits of designating lands within cities. And they provide economic benefits for local businesses as well as for local communities as well. In addition to designating BLM lands as a national monument that also in turn turns into an additional budget for the local Bureau of Land Management, which does result in additional resources and improved management coordination for the area as well. And, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't touch on the climate change. And the reason I want to touch on that is, as I mentioned, our area, the area within the proposal contains some of the most intact soils. And so sometimes when we think about climate change, we don't think of the deserts as a carbon sink. But we do, we do have a large carbon sink here in an area. And we are, it is what we call a biodiversity hotspot as well. So I wanted to show a draft map. And the reason I want to make sure to say that it's a draft map is because, you know, we will continue to receive comments, continue to do outreach, and that map may or may not potentially change. But as of right now, I am showing you the most recent map that was approved by our coalition this month. And as you can see, the green line would be the new proposed monument. As I mentioned, give or take, we're looking at 700,000 acres. The areas that you see colored in a, I guess, a lighter beige, those are existing wilderness areas. So those are existing wilderness areas that are within the proposal. And give or take, you're looking at wilderness areas that are protected, 243,154 acres. As you can, as you'll notice, the boundary of the proposal does extend towards the Salton Sea, and that's a little boot-shaped area that you're looking at. And that is also known as the Bos Palmas Area of Critical Environmental Concern. The southern border does hug what is known as the Bradshaw Trail and as well as the Chocolate Mountains area of Gannery Range. And because I'm talking to a local city council, I also wanted to reflect on the fact that, you know, these areas, especially towards the east portion of the proposal, are areas that have already been identified by all of the cities within the Coachella Valley as important for conservation. The black line that you see there is the boundary for the Coachella Valley Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, or CVMHCP for short. As some of you may know, our conservation plan is a model that has been followed by other communities and is a great example of what conservation could look like and that benefits both development as well as conservational wildlife corridors and habitats. As part of our outreach as well, you know, and one of the things that we wanted to protect is also the areas that are culturally important to our indigenous neighbors. We are very proud to say that within our coalition, we do have tribal representation and that all of the local tribal members that you see listed on the screen have been contacted and we are continuing. It's not going to be a one-time contact. It's something that's going to continue throughout the life of the proposal. For any of you guys that are curious, the picture that we're looking at here is actually from Court Springs Campgrounds, which is a BLM campsite that's available to the public. An additional goal that we would like to address within our proposal is to expand the Josh Retreat National Park. Give or take, we're looking at this area about 20,000 acres. And these are, this is a piece of land that has already been approved and does, and approved and studied by the National Park Service as a suitable addition. Our goal number three would also be to recognize, as you know, we're all very well aware that without farm workers, our way of life pretty much would not exist the way it does. So we want to recognize the farm workers within Riverside County, Imperial Counties, and also honor the legacy of Cesar Chavez, Boloreo Huerta, and Larry Itlong, who, you know, way back when in 66, started to form this movement that, you know, to represent our farm workers. And a part of our outreach efforts is to reaching out as well to the farmworking families. So I just wanted to share some of the pictures of, that I found from historical artifacts. And the colored picture is actually a recent photo from this year from an aerial tour that our coalition led for tribal members and other local members as well of the area. What you're looking at are agricultural fields and the Mecca Hills Wilderness in the background. And because we are focused on community, our goal number four would be to ask for a recreation needs study. And this study would basically identify the needs of the community to make sure that we're creating, that we're creating accessible and approachable areas for people to visit. We want to take the needs of the community in place and we want to also address whatever concerns they may have. As we all know, there's several benefits both to our mental and physical health when we get to explore the outdoors. And we want to make sure that we continue that for the benefit of our community. And we all know that the outdoors may look different for some. And as for some people, for example, they might like hiking. For some people, they might like camping. So all of the pictures that you see here are pictures that were taken within the proposal. You know, we sit here in the city council chambers, right in back of Veterans Park. And another group that we feel deserves to recognition would be the World War II veterans. And within the proposed area, there's also historical areas that are important to the community as they are part of the World War II training sites. These includes camps that were used from 1992, 1942, sorry, to 1944 to train troops that were going to fight in North America. They were established by General Patton and give or take about 10% of all troops were trained in these camps. I did want to trim down the presentation just for ease of time, but I did want to invite you and as well as the community members to, you know, help us support this effort. And there's a number of ways that you could do that. I would be lying if I wouldn't say that I would like to request, respectfully request a little bit of support or resolution from the city in support of our proposal. We also do have a bilingual website where people could access more information as well as follow us online. At this time, I'd like to conclude my presentation and open it up for any questions from the council members or the staff or community members.
Council, any questions? Thank you so much. I just said, just questions and suggestions. I know that you were actually, this presentation was made in front of the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, the CBCC. And there, it was, it was put in front of them as well for support. And the CBCC asked more questions, particularly as the, like where their interface or where there's an overlay of potential, like off-road vehicle, off-road mobile, off-roading. Because there is a proposal out there as well and wanting to make sure that that gets included. And then I know there was a question that was asked regarding the proposed maps and the interface of the, of the multi-species habitat plan. And the suggestion was is that hopefully we're not having to put more land into the habitat plan and for conservation. So, so, so those are some of the things that I know that folks that were part of those efforts, we're going to get back to the commission about. And I think those are good suggestions. And in terms of how we, I know for Coachella, for example, we're, we're a community that is basically paying for the habitat conservation plan. Why? Because we're less developed and the rest of the Coachella Valley was developed and didn't, doesn't have to pay the development fee. And so we're just wanting to make sure that, that we understand what areas could potentially be in this, or maybe there's none. But let's, let's also, let's just be aware, Gabriel Perez, and work to see, can we create these, these corridors where we tie in? And then what's the impact to the city of Coachella? And then long-term, right, if, if there's ever going to be a, a off-road vehicle effort, which the Coachella Valley has been looking for one, Riverside County as well. And I say that because one of the things that's happening in our neighborhoods is there's a lot of people with off-road vehicles and they're using those off-road vehicles in the streets. And we need to designate some area for that. So we can all kind of figure out how to live in harmony with conservation and kind of people. I think that's something we want to really kind of.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. Those are really great. And if possible, I'd like to address them. So for the people that may not be familiar, the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission is the agency that oversees the Coachella Valley Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. And yes, as part of our outreach, other coalition members, I believe it might have been my mother-in-law, who reached out to that agency and provided the presentation. So to go back to your question about the, the OHV trails, I'd like to go ahead back to the map, if I may.
During their interactive map, that's, it's like, like the borders are like, I can't see from your side. I know like, I'll tell you something, there's a lot of like power lines or some of the solar fields out there too.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah. And I do apologize for that, including that in my previous notes. So I would like to clarify that the boundary or any portion of our proposal does not affect any renewable energy. All of the DFAs have been taken out. And that is something that we have definitely taken into consideration when we draft our boundaries. And one of, as I mentioned earlier, one of the reasons why the map is a draft is because we are meeting with different groups and we're taking in their input and trying to address everyone's concerns as we go along. So to go back to the question about OHV trails, unfortunately, and it's something that COFEM is trying to do as of, you know, last year. Basically, we're trying to educate our community about conservation because there is definitely a way for us to both coexist and recreate in a number of ways. So we know, for example, I might not like OHV driving, but some people may. And there's definitely really important to make sure that everyone receives what they need. Having said that, it's also important to always follow the rules as well. Unfortunately, there is a lot of OHV activity on areas that isn't allowed. But the OHV community is also another group that we will be reaching out as well. There is a trail in, it's not shown on this map, but if you go on Box Canyon, which would be between the Mecca Hills and Oracopia Mountains Wilderness, there is an authorized OHV trail that's called the Mecca Copia Trail. And that is probably one of the most, I would say, significant and popular areas for OHV. And that is one of the particular areas that we would want the recreational needs study to focus on. As far as your other question for the proposed area that I believe the county was looking to designate as a new OHV community or focus area, that area is not within the proposed boundary as of today, as far as this draft map is concerned. And, you know, we would also keep in mind that also moving forward with any additions or any modifications to the map, we are definitely keeping an eye out for any other. We are definitely keeping an eye out for any other proposals that may potentially pose interference to our map. Just to make sure that we're being conscientious and being respectful of everyone's opinions. But as it stands right now, no, it would not touch that boundary. I believe the, the part that you're referring to or the proposed part that you're referring to would be on the east portion. So it's kind of like that little square on the left-hand side of the map.
Shed a laser on it, it'll be easier.
Does this have a laser I can point? Oh, okay. It probably doesn't. Or if it does, I don't know how to use it.
It's a little hand. It's moving the little hand, but you were doing it right.
Yeah. That was good. The map is, yeah, you love to see more interactive map.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to keep the presentation very short because I know you guys have a pretty packed agenda. So I wanted to be, well, it's an ArcGIS, but happy to host you in our office and provide a more in-depth presentation.
And I think we do need that. And then the thing is, is that if we want to pass a resolution. And, and as you all try to form a coalition to go city by city to try to get this approved. Cause I'm assuming it's going to need federal recognition and support, et cetera. And I was part of the effort that did the Santa Snow Monument. And, and you know, so a lot of stakeholders' opinions were really put in and factored in on what the impact was, et cetera. So, so I, I think for us, it's, it's what's the impact on our border? You know, and, and looking at, you know, is the CVMSACP and Coachella Boundary? Or is Coachella being asked to do more? Is it less? I don't know. We'd have to really kind of figure out how the seat, the Coachella Valley or the city of Coachella's multi-species plan interfaces here. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but those.
Yeah. So for that, I could show you the next map. And the black boundary line would be the boundary for the Coachella Valley Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. And I, another note that I think is worth highlighting is that any proposal for a new designation of a national monument would only affect federal lands.
Right, right. But so I'm just looking at, you know, the area where it meets the city boundary? Or put, or does it? I don't know. And so it'd be good to kind of overlay the city boundary there. And then figure out like, you know, what can we do to kind of create these corridors? If there's an opportunity for Coachella to like, you know, to.
Are you referring to the existing city boundary or the proposed expansion of the city?
The existing city.
The existing city boundary.
That includes our sphere of influence as well.
Okay. So you are looking for the sphere of influence.
Yeah. Yeah. And then looking at how that might interplay. And Gabriel can help you with all of that.
Yeah. Happy to provide an additional map with the sphere of influence and more roads. If that would be helpful.
Yeah, it'd be good. And I know, I know, for example, in Desert Hot Springs. They did the same, a similar effort. And then they actually worked on, on designating like corridors or walking trails into the monument. And that's used as a recreational tourism attraction.
Yeah, well, a lot of, a lot of those areas are within the proposed, I'm sorry, not the proposed. A lot of the areas that you're referring to are within the conservation plan here. That is the black line shown in the map. There's a total of 22 conservation areas that address different.
We just want to see them.
And I know you want to see them. So yeah, I'll definitely get you a new map. That shows the sphere of influence. And if there's anything else that you'd like to see, happy to address those as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the question for like, or especially our immigrant population that I know from time working in conservation. Was when we create national monuments, there's, because it's federal land too. And we have issues where we've had some of our, our families go like, we're fishing in whitewater. And if Border Patrol could get involved, because so it's a lot of that education aspect too is. How can we make sure that our families continue going to Mecca Hills? Having, you know, going, doing their barbecues like they've done a long time. While we're trying to do something good and not intending for now that now federal agents, you know, are, are, are taking care of this property of this national monument. Where we don't want to put some of our undocumented families in a position where they could be deported. For, for not following the rule that they may or may have not been familiar with that's required under national monuments.
Well, I think it's important to distinguish both offices. We are talking about Border Patrol. But the administration of a national monument would fall under the Bureau of Land Management. Because we are within the 100 miles zone of the border. Border Patrol is seen here. I mean, I, there's definitely been times when COFEM hosts clinics for either our mental health. Or immigration services, or when sometimes some of our partners have hosted health clinics here as well. And unfortunately, yeah, we do see that. We see that Border Patrol is here and that they even, you know, put their little table during job fairs. So unfortunately, it is something that I, I feel like we might continue to see just because of the fact that we're within the 100 mile radius of the border.
Yeah, but, but it, it's a, it's a common thing for, for people when it's happened where they've gone to national monuments. And so we need to make sure that we want to support conservation of it without, with, you know, I think what you're doing already, the education part. So how can we elevate that aspect? Because yeah, it's under BLM, but BLM is under the Department of Interior. And under the last president, the Department of Interior wasn't a really nice place to work with. You know, and, and under, we're under this president, we, we have the opportunity to work, you know, and that's my bias. Under this president, there's been better stuff happening with the Department of Interior. But the last president was attacking these national monuments was stripping a lot of, trying to strip stuff. And so it's, it's, it depends on who the president is and, you know. That's sort of like what I think too. It's, I understand it's different departments, but it, it, it has happened. We've heard of families that go fishing and they're at the national monument after hours and then they get in trouble. And it leads to deportation for crossing national, federal borders, federal lands at times that they shouldn't be there. And so I think that's, that's the, the aspect of just the education for our families that, you know, feel secure to be at. So you know, the, the Mecca Hills is somewhere that's very popular to our families.
Yeah, Mecca Hills Wilderness is definitely one of the most popular areas, I would say. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the main focuses of our conservation group is specifically to bring down those barriers and to help educate our. Community about the, both the recreational and educational opportunities that are available here in the Coachella Valley. And also helping create these areas as a more welcoming space. I'd be curious to know where you mentioned that there's fishing, because there is no fishing in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it. From my experience, when I used to work in this effort too. In similar aspect that we heard of families when we're doing outreach and that had this happened. So I.
Oh, I don't doubt that you've seen Border Patrol. Yeah, I've definitely have seen Border Patrol out there. Previous to overseeing or leading advocacy efforts for COFEM, I was doing land acquisition. So I've, I've been from everywhere from whitewater down to those five miles. And I have definitely encountered Border Patrol. As I mentioned, the main, what we would want to do is continue to engage our community and address their concerns. One of the groups that we have also started having initial conversation is also with the Bureau of Land Management as well. And, you know, overall, I would say that the feeling that we have received from them is that they want to continue to encourage to have. Multi-generational and different backgrounds, people on the public lands. As a matter of fact, the local Bureau of Land Management went as far as sponsoring one of our recent hikes that we had hosted here in Mecca Hills Wilderness. That you might've seen that we posted about it. It was a night hike that we did in Mecca Hills and, you know, we talked about astronomy, we talked about blatts, we talked about geology. I mean, it's just a way to get people out.
Especially was taking one hour with work for COFEM. These kids are like in high school now.
Yeah, that's in Mecca Hills Wilderness.
And I was working for COFEM, we organized some of this and, and that, I'm like, these kids are like in high school, they're like middle school.
Yeah, that's, that's the image that I was asking you about earlier. Cause I kind of, I kind of was looking at the times and I figured that might've been during your time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These kids are older already. I'm the same height, you know.
Yeah. All righty. Well, thank you. I think if we can get back on those questions, we'll work with Gabriel to look at. The overlays of how this might affect the city and look at the opportunities.
Yeah. And if there's any other questions that you or your staff might think of later on, please let me know.
Thank you.
Email the interactive map. I'm on that website, but I can't on the, on the website.
Do you want, I'm sorry?
Can you email us the interactive map? I'm on the, I'm on the website, protectcadeserts.org and I'm. I'm not able to find.
Yeah, that's more of a static map that I have here reflected in the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah. But like I said, also happy to host you in our office. You guys know where we're at. So any other questions that you might think of, happy to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on now to a presentation on the 2022 holiday parade of David.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen with you that I can. And I'm hoping that's populating on everyone's screen. Can everyone see it? Sorry.
Nope.
Nope.
We cannot see your screen. It is not being shared.
Is that showing up for you guys?
We see it now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm just wanted to provide the council an update with regards to us moving into our holiday season and. The kickoff to that season usually being our tree lighting and then our holiday parade. We've spoken with a lot of the ACES coordinators after our presentation. We actually met with 24 ACES coordinators and their feedback with regards to the theme. And that's why my prior image was anime related. So I'll go into that in a second. But it seems like that seems to be a very popular thing with kids in the current season. And we'll be recommending something that reflects that. We did meet with the 24 ACES coordinators and advisors and discussed with them the concerns that were noted by council primarily in looking for ways to decrease. The number, the length of the parade, right? Not so much the number of entries, but finding ways to reduce the total time of the parade. So we did relay that concern to the ACES advisors and they are familiar and aware that they need to make sure that their kiddos keep moving to avoid those gaps. And that it be more of a moving parade as with the exception of the time that they do perform in front of the judges. One way to also reduce the time in front of the judges, we did discuss an opportunity where we would preload all of their music. So that's not taking up some of that staging time that they use to get the kiddos in place in front of the judges and then, and set up their, their music. So all that would be preloaded with our sound engineer for the parade. Lastly, another option that we still think is, would help, and we think that we can get it funded by a sponsor. Would be to add a contractor that would essentially provide monitors along the route, right? So they would be disbanded every five or six entries so that they can ensure that they are moving forward and maintaining. A, a shorter distance between themselves and the, the entry before them. See, and I think that those are most of the items in ways that we found that we would be able to shrink some of the time that was being spent. Along the route and also spoke with some of the entries to see if they would be willing to do like a pre-show as opposed to walk in the entire route. And there are a few entries that would be willing to do that as well. Not from our kiddos, but some of the, of our other entries. Um, again, to the theme of this year's parade, we're recommending an anime related theme to the parade. As that seems to have captured attention for our kiddos. Definitely a GPG rated anime versions are what we would be looking for and looking for a variation to the parade. Title for this year of Anime Coachella Holiday Parade or Coachella Animated Holiday Parade. Animated Coachella Holiday Parade are some of the options that were thrown around between the school district. Advisors, coordinators and city, the city team that works together to put this event together. And then if this is a theme that the council would support, we were suggesting the grand marshal be, the compilation of artists. That have been approved to install murals during this, this calendar year, 2022. And these are just some examples of some of the anime that the kids are, are following. And that would be possibly reflected in this year's parade if the council supported this theme. Happy to answer questions at the council on this topic.
Also.
Oh, yeah. It's cool. I don't know much about anime, so I can't speak. But I know a lot of people like anime. I, I, you know, I think what, what I, what I, and I, I think broken record, I just want to encourage that we reach out to. Other elected officials that were sent to Sarah too, and other areas, special districts and school districts. Like the school districts have unified and the desert district and provide them an opportunity for that, for them to get their own staff, a car in this, in this. In, in this parade. I know last year was like, I'm trying to get it, it was a little late. So, but I think this year we coordinate specifically with, with these other districts and invite them to come out and, 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 and. Get in the car. Obviously maybe we have some special rules and making sure, you know, I think the, the, the theme in general, you know, whether it's anime or when not like. We're here to celebrate the holidays and anything that makes it fun, brings younger people. And interactive, I, I think the, the, the anime showed, those are animes from back, I remember from when I was like Yu-Gi-Oh and Pokemon. I think now they have some crazier animes, like, like some like different cooler ones. I don't know, then, you know, Dragon Ball Z is pretty cool. We all know that one. My car could be Dragon Ball Z, like a cloud, like Goku had a cloud. I'd like to have that. But yeah, let's, let's reach out to the school districts and, and, and the, the parks and other the other districts to make sure that they get a chance to celebrate with us.
Well, definitely extend the invitation.
I. For me, it's fine. You know, you have a committee. My, my main concern though is, is in talking to the superintendent last year. Is the run of show. It's, it's a long program, right? I mean, we start at five and then go to. Like they're not out of there till 11 o'clock. And so wanting, making sure that the parade runs efficient. And, and that there isn't any gaps. Last year, there was some big gaps in the parade route where, you know. Folks would come out and then 20 minutes later, the next car would pass and, and there wasn't a consistent, like. There needs to be people along the trail, on the, along the route that's moving people along. And if, and if we need to, I think there's a lot of emphasis that's, that's in the, in the beginning. There's a lot of emphasis in front of the judge, but there's no emphasis in front of like the, like, like, like monitors in the middle. That can keep people moving and, and that, uh, the amount of time that the parade is taking. The disruption that it's, that, that happens between the, between one, you know, participant and the next. Or the, the lack of movement, it makes the parade like very, very long. And so my, my, my thing is, is yes, you can pre. Kind of, you know, show or you can do some other things. But for me, really, it's all the long, the route where you need to have some coordinated efforts to move people along to move these folks through. Because we, we don't want to be in a situation where we were last year. Where there was literally a 20 minute gap between one participant and the next. And then the other participant and the next. So whoever is, is running the, the, the parade, you know. Make sure that in the middle, and there's plenty of staff there, but that everybody is saying, hey, move the parade along, move the parade along and get it going. And so whatever it is that we need to do, the parade just needs to move. And because, because five hours, six hour parade is, is not, is not good. So that's, that's my suggestion and that we, we kind of get more monitors along the track or along the trail, the route. And then kind of just make sure that people can move.
And that is one of, that is one of our suggestions, Mayor. So we are on point with that and we're working on that if the council supports that.
I think it's a point too. I was a, a, my, last year, my son was born on the ninth. And so I didn't get to participate. I was in the hospital.
Oh, yeah.
And I think last year was a ten, so I was coming back home. So I avoided it, but I was, when I got home, I was still going on, so I was watching it from my phone. So it's nice this year, though it's on the ninth, I'm attentively approved because it's some like son's birthday. And, and, you know, Mondo, right? You know, on the birthday. So. But, um, you know, one thing that I saw too, though, that I know we have specific rules, but I think a city, we need a rule, lead by example. And if we have vehicles, we all need to go on the vehicles. I think last year, some folks were walking, had more than people that should have been there. You know, I think it's important that, that in order for us to also speed it like, you know, we have a vehicle, let's get in the vehicle, let's, you know, say hello to people. But we can have a parade within a parade. You know, it needs to sort of flow and that will be helped with the flowing process.
It's, it's not the, the people in the front. It's the people that are behind. And that's the, the, you know, the, the, the participants in the front, everybody's moving, everybody's getting through. Everybody's doing their thing. It's in the middle. Like last year, for example, the seniors. They, they walked the parade and they should have not walked the parade. You know, they had a lot of, they had a lot of issues. And, and so we need to. And and so we need to just be very mindful of of how we can accommodate participants. That we're not saying that they shouldn't participate, they should participate. It's a matter of accommodating, you know, accommodating them so that they can have a enjoyable experience and that they're not getting hurt. And then the other side of it too is that there needs to be more coordination with like and making these making sure that the kids move along. You know, and sometimes they wanna they wanna perform various times on the route. And then performing various times on the route and nobody monitoring that performance creates a lag. So so, for example, on the turn into Sixth Street, a lot of people, they they want to perform on that corner. And there's nobody saying, hey, you got thirty seconds or you got one minute, keep it going. And so you'll see groups that like they they'll they'll start performing and then the 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 parade routes already like way in front. And as a result, there's this huge like gap between, you know, the turn and then the the parade. And then that's the issue that nobody's, you know, moving along. So so there's either there's a there's a couple of options. One, don't allow people like keep marching them through and all the performances happen, but then you got to be careful that they don't queue. Or you have another monitor at the turn of the corner. If they want to do a little performance there, they're timed one minute, you go. I mean, so that that's it's really keeping the performance and the parade route moving because having a parade for six hours is not enjoyable and you lose a lot of people throughout the parade. And so that's that's my only concern is that keeping like keeping movement and that also becomes a safety issue. Because then at the end of the night, you have you have a lot of kids that need to jump on the bus. And it's already eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, and you have a lot of kids that that need to get home. So, you know, really working with the school district to 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 keep people moving along is going to be important.
I agree with with both what you and Nef Neftele said. I think the theme is a great theme. I think it's popular with children, all ages from little to teens.
Adults.
Adults as well. I see a lot of adults with tattoos of anime. So I deal with children every day and I would say seventy percent of the kids, when you talk to them, it's about anime. They love anime. My son was into Pokemon, my and Dragon Ball Z and all of that stuff. So it has not lost interest with the youngsters. But I do want to elaborate on what Neftele said that as elected officials, we get on on cars and last year there was an elected official that was walking and that wasn't the issue. There were children that was that were walking alongside the car and I was worried because I was seeing the children getting too close to the vehicle that I was in and they were being monitored and all the excitement and I was you know, that's that's I was worried that kiddos could have gotten trampled by the vehicle because they were getting too too close. And I myself were telling them to to move back from the vehicle that I was in. So we got to be careful with that. But in terms of moving the parade, it's a beautiful parade. We get a lot of lot of people out and we want to be efficient so that there aren't large gaps because you know, it 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 does turn out to be a long parade and that is a great thing that we have so many participants because people want to you know, to come out and it's a popular event. We just wanted to be a little more efficient and more safe. So we have to be careful and watch the kiddos that are walking alongside vehicles because I can tell you, there were about three incidents where I literally had to tell the kids, no, no, move back with your kids. I'm yelling out of my car because I'm worried about the kids that were getting too close to to the vehicle that should have been with their parents or with their elected official that was behind me in the vehicle, not in the vehicle walking. Those are my comments.
All right. Well, if there are no other suggestions or comments, we'll move on now. We'll move on to SB thirteen eighty three update. Give her who's. Marita.
Mayor, yes, me again. Just a quick update for the council. We wanted to just advise that we are proceeding in our compliance to thirteen eighty three and sending out information to our residential. So our residents that are receiving already the residential services provided by BRTAC are holler. We have advised them that effective November first, their organic waste should be separated, bagged, and then it would be and they would be able to put that in their green container. We've also sent out information that's shown here on the screen with regards to those that would like to take advantage and get a pail that is a free pail for them to source separate their organic waste that would then be bagged and placed in their green bin again, as I mentioned just earlier, with regards to what goes in that that what should be bagged is any food waste and any soil paper goods would also be eligible to be bagged and put in that green bin. And then this again is all related to SB thirteen eighty three, which is the intent is is a climate focused improvement to California's to the climate change challenges that we are seeing. And with regards to our commercial customers, we also have rolled out our program that council approved us to use. We did receive a Cal recycle grant of sixty eight thousand dollars earlier this year to help with the rollout of thirteen eighty three. And we did specify that some of a significant portion of that would be going to helping our businesses in complying with both three forty one and eighteen twenty six, which are both products and co-mingled within thirteen eighty three. So we wanted to and give you an update that we have been able to meet that all of our commercial businesses that were not compliant in both of these laws and both of which are components of thirteen eighty three for our commercial customers are now compliant. So over one hundred and seventeen customers that were not compliant have been either identified as exempt or have been provided the the appropriate containers to allow them to comply with recycling and organics or separation. And that is all I have.
I'm a I I want to just commend our staff on on these efforts to roll out the program, make sure that multifamily know, make sure the restaurants know that that there is a new law in town and and provided by the state, et cetera. I think, however, that it's also important to educate the community. And I'm one that's like, I've been reading on this and it's somewhat confusing and be a good idea to put a little video together for residents. Little video that you can put on Facebook or IG that's targeted towards the residents and saying, hey, you got a different color of a of a can now. And this is what it means. And, you know, we can use some of those resources to create a little cool video that that's in English and Spanish. And this you really kind of learning or communicated in a different way with our residents so that so that they're that they know what their responsibility is now. You know, because and we're doing everything on our end to roll out the program, but I think we need to just do a better job of educating the community about this program.
And those are definitely our next steps. We actually have a video that we've worked with BRTAC on developing. So we'll get that on social media and more accessible to the public. But it's also listed on the URL code that was shown for the pale. And it's a it's a really actually concise video, and I think it'll help relay the message you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just haven't seen it. I mean, I've been reading on it and you know, I've seen the new bins, but what am I supposed to do with them? That's a that's really the next thing. It's like how you get people to buy in.
Definitely. Thank you for that comment.
Yeah, I know. It's like not directly connected, but I is a rule that I just learned about too. The residents is we can go out and inform people too about our code of having the bins
Oh, behind.
Behind the guy, I guess, we, you know, it's been a policy, city policy. It's been more implemented, more enforced recently. And so I think a lot of neighbors are a little like
That that's not the the this is you can bring that up to your comments, but yeah, just as an FYI, the code says that they need to be out of sight.
Out of sight, yeah.
So it could be in your front yard, but you have to build a little a little wall that doesn't show them. And I think that's fine. It's just educating people what they can 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 do. Another topic, and we can bring that up later, though.
Let's connect them. We have more colorful bins now. They can be seen. So it's been brought up.
I I agree. I've been hearing it a lot as well. Coming, but we can bring it up.
Okay, thank you for that update, Marita.
Thank you.
Move on now to ready communication. Is there any ready communication?
We received two, one for item number nine, which has been continued. And one for item or an email, I'm sorry. And these both of these emails have been forwarded to council. The other email we received is for item number thirty four from twenty nine Palms Band of Mission Indians, and we can read that when we get to that item.
Okay, we'll read it then. We'll move on now to the consent calendars. Recommended that the consent items be acted upon simultaneously. The separate discussion action is requested by the city council. What is his wish of the city council and a reminder that item number nine has been continued.
On a poll number item twenty one.
There is a item number twenty one that has been requested to be pulled. Is there any other items? Team none, go ahead, councilman. What are your concern?
I I concerned that the we're we're giving a grant to purchase goal goals for some sort of goal polls for a park that is in the city park. And I think I prefer for us, if we want to rent them out or have some extras, we buy them ourselves versus using city money to give the grant to one league when we have multiple leagues that play in the city. Instead of and so in addition to, we have done efforts this year already to save costs on a lot of leagues by removing the fees for for the park usage. And so I think this is very just recent too. In addition, CISA was the only club that said they weren't lowering the fees. So they have, you know, those spend funding, those extra fund monies that we have already in kind given them to be able to purchase this if they want to use it for a non-city park. But I think if we want to buy more goals that we want to you know, let all leagues within that play within City of Coachella, then we can then I'm more comfortable using those thousand dollars to buy them ourselves. And then allowing all leagues to, you know, check them out or whatnot if we need to do that. But in the meantime, that's my concern with with this this usage of these funds today.
Okay.
Also, I I I won't, I won't, I don't want, you know, I'm not comfortable proving this.
So that so do you have a motion?
Motion to deny.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call for that?
Member Larson.
I.
Council, Councilmember Adams stepped away from the Mayor, I'm Gonzalez.
No, I didn't step away, Angela. I'm here.
Okay, I see you on the screen. I'm sorry. Remember the no. Okay, and Mayor Potem Gonzalez.
I.
Me on this.
I move on now to the remainder of the consent calendar. It's recommended that these consent items be approved simultaneously. Again, twenty one has been voted on. And item number nine has been continued. The city council.
I motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the balance with I don't want number twenty one being voted on, number ninety continues or a second.
I'll second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please? Are all those in favor signify by saying no?
I.
I.
Motion carries. We'll move on now to item number twenty five, which has been continued to to a new day to be yet to be determined. We'll move on now to item number twenty six. This is resolution number twenty two dash ninety one in support of action by the Desert Communities College District establishing branch in the Coachella in the Eastern Coachella Valley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will be presenting this item to you.
You hear the drums?
Yeah.
This is a resolution number twenty two dash ninety two for the College of Desert establishing a branch in the Eastern Coachella Valley. Wanted to give a background a little bit about district. District was formed in nineteen fifty eight. It was the purpose was to provide a local two-year university that would serve the four hundred thousand people that live in the Coachella Valley along with the nine cities and the three local K through twelve school districts. In March twenty two thousand four, voters in additional approved measure B, the general bond obligation in an amount of three hundred and forty six point five million dollars to renovate the four-year-old campus in Palm Desert and for future growth. Some of the analysis that been provided in this item, if you look at your exhibits, the district currently has about ten thousand nine hundred and eighty students enrolled. Eight thousand two hundred and thirteen are Hispanic and Latinos, which is about seven five percent of the student population. Furthermore, nine that three three thousand nine hundred and two students at the College of Desert are enrolled are from the City of Coachella. That makes up thirty five percent of the student population. The College of Desert is a fairly recognized Hispanic-serving institution. Other analysis that were provided in the staff report indicates the city's efforts to partner with the College of Desert and providing programming opportunities. We currently offer our Coachella Public Library and our three conference rooms for courses offered throughout the year. A lot of them do not offer complete programs or degree pathways. Currently, the College of Desert is working on a tenant improvement project located in the new Pueblo Viejo Villas. It's the affordable housing project right here on Sixth Street. It's one thousand three hundred and fifty five square foot area commercial site that will be used as our new student services center for the residents of Coachella. And it's their construction cost for this project is about six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, about four hundred and eighty dollars per square foot. Right now, they are currently leasing our old library building for this temporary student service center, which is currently open. And they are going to extend the lease to the end of January when their new site is open. The city has not charged them a monthly lease rate. In return, we've asked for about eighty thousand dollars in tenant improvements at the old library building. One of the additions to the resolution we would like to add was that we forgot to include a staff error was which is my error. I apologize for that. Which is whereas on November two thousand sixteen, a five hundred and seventy seven point eight million dollar bond measure CCC CC to invest in the future of Coachella was approved by residents. It had a seventy one percent voter. That's when then President Kilman came to the city council and made his pitch. Staff recommends approving the resolution. The resolution kind of requests that the district do some more thorough planning with sufficient community outreach and conduct maybe a feasibility study that identifies potential sites in the eastern part of the Coachella Valley. It also authorizes the the president to commute, the president of the district to communicate directly with the city manager and continue to communicate strategize on possible building rebuilding, renovation, upgrades and program needs for the Eastern Coachella Valley. With that, I open it up for any questions or comments from the council.
Well, I I just, I think it's important that we modify the resolution and that measure CC. I think that's that's something that is is vital to really understand that in addition to measure B that measure CC was also approved and in subsequent years. So you're talking about a total if you add both, it's over like one point one billion dollars of total of total bonding capacity that the district has. And and of that, you know, I think it's also important that we put into this resolution that the bond language, the legal bond language of the resolution stipulates that improvements are going to be made in for India for the Palm Desert Campus. A a project in the West Valley, a project in the East Valley and community-based sites throughout the Coachella Valley. I think for us, while I can appreciate that the bond language says that a site in the Eastern Coachella Valley, I would venture to say that we should ask for a site in the City of Coachella. And so I'd like to propose that amendment. And as they do their feasibility study that we ask for, you know, some of those proceeds to be spent is somewhere here in the City of Coachella. I don't I I look at the fact that we have thirty five percent of the students and grown. And the fact that our residents are paying for a bond that we that we shouldn't be shy to ask, you know, the College of the Desert Board. So I'm going to ask for those modifications in the the resolution, if that is something that the board would would. So I'm going to ask for those modifications in, uh, the, the resolution, if that is something that the board would, with the council would support. This issue has gotten, you know, very contentious, uh, with respect to folks on western Riverside County saying that this is a Palm Springs-centric bond, and it was never sold to us as a Palm Springs-centric bond. And, and, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that our kids have a right to get educated. The fact of the matter is that today, gas is over six dollars a gallon. And there is a spatial mismatch between, and I'm saying this from an educational standpoint where the students are and where the facilities are. And it's our job as elected officials to make sure that we get a pro rata share, not even call it pro rata share, I'm gonna call it an equitable share of that tax proceeds, uh, you know, for, um, this COD bond. So those are the amendments that I would make. I would, I would, I would add your measure CC and the, whereas is, I would add that instead of eastern Coachella, I would amend eastern Coachella Valley and ask for a city of Coachella's site. And, and then I would, I would also add in that resolution that in no time that we ever hear, or was it ever sold, uh, to us in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen as a Palm Springs-centric bond. It was sold as a Coachella Valley bond with improvements to be made throughout the Coachella Valley. And we are part of the Coachella Valley and we deserve an equitable portion of that, of that, that bond resource. Are my suggestions?
You know, to, to piggyback off, you know, e- equity or equitable, equitable i- in, in, uh, it's different than equality. It, it, it means, it, it means justice. It means fairness. It, not to say that quality doesn't all the time, but sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes equity means you need to provide more where there's more need. And the opposite of equity means you provide more where there's less need. And that means, and, and, and that, and this, and the, and, and that's injustice. And what's been happening in the Coachella Valley regarding the bond measure on the College of Desert Campus is the moment that eastern Coachella Valley elected officials, Coachella about, City of Coachella electeds and, and the school district uh, started demanding for an equitable share of this monies. We started being called corrupt. We started being called names. Uh, we've been called on social media by, at some Anglo activists in the east side. We've been called cartels, a racial slur because we're Mexican. And we're, we're, we're being called all these names simply because we're demanding of equitable share of the distribution of this monies. The mayor's right, the, the, the bond measure doesn't even include a Palm Springs campus. It says West Valley Campus. And in the same way, it says East Valley Campus, City of Coachella could demand a campus too. And we deserve it, our community deserves it. And the idea, when the present, the idea of a hospitality-centered program, that that's what Latinos and that's what low-income people want, that's not true. Our community want pro access to programs of higher education that are, that if it's going to be hospitality, then the, then the center needs to be business entrepreneurship, and hospitality can be part of it. But we, but we don't, we're not asking for more of that. We're asking for more pathways, and we're asking for pathways that we can walk to that we don't need to take, our families don't even get on a sun bus and have to travel an hour or so to access these hi- uh, higher education centers. We, as a city, under the leadership of our mayor, have done a great job in doing our part. We have our libraries that we have opened up doors, saying we have these extra conference space. And, and we, and, and we invite you to use this, not because, you know, it's, it's, you know, we specifically COD, but because of our residents that deserve this, the, the access here. And we've opened up the annex of the library that we just got a grant for, and we hope that we work together to further expand that too. And we had, there's a lot of Coachellas, one of the cities where there's a lot more land than other areas. Uh, and, and we're not specific to, you know, certain area in, in, in the city of Coachella. You know, we have a lot of land. We have, obviously, we want to have an area that, that is accessible to our neighbors. And then ensuring that our students that graduate from schools east in, in, in Coachella Valley are, are able to finish their two years here and attend a higher education institution if they, if they so deserve. But the idea of continuing this mentality that when Raza, when Chicanos demand equitable share of distribution with thugs is simply unacceptable, and the fact that desert, that, that, that desert community has allowed it and has accepted is completely immoral and it's, it's form of injustice. We're tired of that. We're nobody's, we're not, we're, because, because we're here fighting for our people, people in the eastern Coachella Valley. That doesn't mean that we are, 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 are corrupt or because we want to take grab. It, it doesn't mean that. And, and, and we, and we, when we, we're, now that we grew up here, and we're here because we're students that, that, that grew up in these communities. And at one point, we didn't have that access. We didn't have, you know, the, the, the ability to do such. And our duty now of coming back after we were educated was a, create, not, and not making sure that everyone has it the same hard way that we had it. We need to make sure that now we create an easier path, a more accessible path for future generations to come. And that's why I support this resolution. And I think it's, 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 it would be appalling if anyone decide, that, that sits in this dais, uh, decides to vote against or abstains from this resolution.
I agree with every word you said, um, councilman Gonzalez. It's very clear that the need is here in our desert, in our, uh, the east end. It, you don't have to, it's, it's as clear as, as, as day. Um, what is going on and the games that are played and the things that are said to separate us to, um, uh, attempt to do what traditionally has been done by, um, the people who have often made decisions, um, that don't even live within our, our, our areas, um, about what is happening in our city. And I'm talking about the west end. Um, and when we decide that we, well, when we decided to become elected officials, it was with the purpose of empowering our communities, with the purpose of speaking out when we see injustice. It was with the purpose of showing, um, uh, the, the injustice. And, um, when, when you have one side of, of the, um, the Coachella Valley, um, looking at us when we're advocating for and doing what we said we're going to do for our children to make it easier to get to, um, to where we all, um, to get to, to, uh, higher education when we, when we, when, when we see that this is, this is going on, it's really, it's really disheartening. It's really disheartening to see that today in this time, at a time where, um, we believe we have a progressive dais, all of us together, um, all five of us, um, are, are thinking what is in the best interest. And yet you have some on the dais that are in a disagreement. They're in alignment with another part of the Coachella Valley that is not in the best interest of our city. And it's really difficult to, to, to swallow that without getting upset. It's really difficult to, at this day and age, to see these injustices that continue. We here in Coachella are going to continue to advocate for our children. We're going to continue to demand that we get what is, what we, um, we are entitled to, what we as hard-working, um, families are, are paying into these taxes so that our children could get educated. We are their voice and will continue to be their voice. And we will show, um, the entire Coachella Valley that here in Coachella, we're not going to, we're not going to shut up. We're not going to, um, be quiet because they call us thugs or mafia or, um, whatever it is that they choose to call us. What we are are compassionate advocates for our community, for our children, and we're going to continue to be that. And if we have to get louder, then we're going to get louder. If we have to, um, call it as it is, then we're going to be completely honest and transparent in calling them what it is. It's unjust. It's, 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 it's terrible. Um, the tactics that they're using to align themselves with people on this dais to separate us, it's disgusting. And it needs to be called out, and we're not going to allow that anymore. We deserve just as much as every other city in our community deserves for their children, and we're going to continue to advocate for our children. So I am in complete agreement with this.
And, and I'll, I'll add, uh, at the same time, still fully support of a Mecca campus and, and, and fully funding that campus that remains in, in the septic tank and water wells. It's time to connect that, that, you know, a lot of that land was donated. And COD hasn't spent the money that it should spend for the community there. Uh, uh, obviously, they built it there because it was donated. I think it's in a, in an era that's not really walking distance to a lot of our, our homes. But it's there already, and, and the fact that we haven't, they haven't further grown on that, and it hasn't been ignored, and it had been remaining septic tanks, uh, and the most of the money is being created for, is being sort of put in for one West Valley campus to include a hotel. And, and before we started calling it out, they were calling it a boutique hotel. If you read the desert sun and a lot of the reports are calling it a boutique hotel. And we started calling it out, they started calling it a learning hotel. Now it's a learning one. The fact that they want to use hotels, use bond money that's based for education on hotels, that's going to be tax revenue to one particular city is unfair. And then further that, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll even, uh, speak a little bit in, in, in what happened in Palm Springs. The fact that this campus in the West Valley was going to be put in, in, in North Palm Springs in a community that, that was promised this campus in that area, that deserves, that would be more equitable to build it where they were going to build it. And all of a sudden, it was moved to downtown. Uh, you know, that, that, without community involvement, community support, and now they're trying to do, and now, and that's sort of in the micro lens in that one city. And now when we bring a concern about it, the entire Coachella Valley, you know, we're, we're sort of like, you know, we're, we're sort of the bad guys. It's like, no, it, it, it's ti- time, you know, time is different, where communities are growing. Uh, today it's us, but I know five and ten years from now, uh, we're going to have people just like us that we, we hoped that we created these higher access to the, to higher education, and that they were able to have that path and were able to now sit in this dais and, and fight for even more. And we're going to continue to fight for equitable share, and we won't stop at, at College of Desert. I think moving forward, I, you know, we, we need to have elected officials that demand when we approve regional projects. A lot of times, the regional projects, process of Coachella Valley start in the west and end in the east. And we need to stand up a little more now, and we need to make sure that if we're gonna, if we're gonna use a lot of the, the, the demographic statistics of eastern Coachella Valley to secure some grant funding, then we need to start projects in the east and then in the west. That, 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 that needs to be part of the conversation too. And this is an example of it. I think we, we, we need to be bold and we need to be innovative, and we need to stand up for our, our, our young ones and our elders and the people that are aged too, traditional or non-traditional students.
Um, I do have some, I do have some comments. I'm, I'm going to ask that members of council not speak on my behalf. I'm sorry?
Nobody's mentioned your name.
Well, councilmember Gonzalez mentioned people on the dais. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to speak. Can I, can I speak or do I have to ask?
Go ahead and speak.
Thank you. At no time did I ever say that I did not want a campus in the city of Coachella. At no time did I ever say that I did not support education in the city of Coachella. It's not my style to be disrespectful to people in the Coachella Valley. Just because I have respectful conversations with those doesn't mean that I support anything that anybody else is doing. So I just want to make it very clear that I no time that I ever say that I do not support, uh, Coachella campus.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I want to just, uh, elaborate a little bit about why we're so passionate about this issue. We, we, we are all equal taxpayers, you know, and, and when you look at who's being assessed, it's all of us. And one of the things that we feel strongly about is, is the education of our, of our students in, in the eastern Coachella Valley. And when you look at what's occurring today regarding this bond and both bonds, you're talking about one point one billion dollars. You know, there is going to be a campus in the west side, and we're okay with there being a campus in the west side. There's also going to be another campus of some sort that will include automotive services, et cetera, but probably some other uh, class renderings in, in Cathedral City. And then you're going to see as well what already is occurring, you know, uh, huge improvements happening at College of the Desert, Palm Desert. So when you look at the improvements that are going on in the central and west end of the valley, there's, there, there's substantial, there's substantial. When you look at what's going on east, uh, we, everybody's saying, you know, you should be happy, Indio's getting upgrades. The city of Indio's population is over a hundred thousand people and growing. And more than likely, they're going to be probably at the end of build-out to about a hundred and fifty thousand people. When you look at what's going on and what they did in the east, and, and when I think of east, I think of Coachella, Mecca, Thermal Oasis. What we got is twelve trailers and a septic tank. And that's what our students got. When you look at how the city of Coachella operates within the eastern Coachella Valley, everybody in Mecca Thermal Oasis views the city of Coachella as the place where they can buy the groceries, the place that they want to move their families to. Uh, they look at Coachella as a place where they can come and visit great restaurants and, and good, uh, and good, and get good, uh, uh, you know, food and services. Uh, they're looking at the city of Coachella as a place to get educated. And for us to, to ask and for us to, to demand more of that bond, particularly because let's be real, when is College of the Desert going to get another bond, particularly with the mess that's, that's been occurring? You won't see another college bond for a community college pass in the next twenty years. And if we don't fight for our equitable share of these resources, the growth that's occurring in Coachella, the fact that our kids here and who are our students, just to go over the population, the, the city of Coachella medium age is thirty-two years old. Half of that population is under eighteen. When you look at the adult school that's just down the street right here, it's the only adult school in the Coachella Valley, and there's ever four thousand students that are going to that adult school, but yet there's no feeder. When you look at it just, uh, where the Latino population is headed because of affordability issues, because of the fact that leadership in this community and other communities wants to build affordable housing, it's coming east. It's coming to, uh, the Coachella, Mecca Thermal Oasis. And so while they're trying to kind of lump us in and saying, well, you know, you, you, you know, you're, the East Valley campus is Indio. Indio on, on its own already is Indio, La Quinta, Bermuda Dunes, uh, you know, Indian Hills. It's big, it's getting bigger. And at the same time, all of us are left wanting here of a chance to improve our lot in life. And, and there are hills that we are willing to die on, and education is one of them. One of those hills because we know what education has done for everybody on this dais, what education can do for everybody or has done for everybody out there. And that's why we get passionate. And for people to say that there are backdoor deals, there, there, these, these conversations have been had since two thousand and sixteen, six, since two thousand and seventeen. And then the next question is, how did the deals get done in Cathedral City? If, if, if those weren't in the bonds, somebody had conversations with elected leaders, well, why aren't they having conversations out, out, out there? We cannot quietly, we cannot quietly, and if people don't answer, we're going to knock a little louder. And if people still don't answer, you get kind of tired of it, and you, next you know it, you're going to have to kick the door down and say, we're going to demand some of this. Because that's just the way we're going to do it. We have to do it. There, there, there's not going to be another bond pass for years to come. And this bond is going to, it's finite. It means that it's not going to grow. It's, it's, it's only going to be, uh, uh, the amount of dollars that they're going to out that, that have been allocated by the voter. And if we don't get a fair share, we'll never get a fair share. We'll never get any more money. Because that's just the way politics rolls. First rule of politics is always understand, at least local government, is to understand the resources are finite, and politics is about who gets what, when, where, how, and when. And we're asking that we get our equitable share of that money, and we're not going to wait. We're not going to, we're not going to just sit there and say, well, we'll be nice when, when the time comes, the time comes. No, if we're not loud, if we don't raise our voice, the train's going to pass. Or, or the, the, somebody give me a, an educational, uh, you know, play on words here. The, the, the book's going to close.
We're going to fail our
We're, we're going to fail.
We're going to fail our community.
We need to be loud. We need to be loud, and we need to demand that, that we get an equitable share of that. So those are my comments, and I'm going to motion to approve what the amendments that I added, the amendment being one that we included, uh, uh, measure CC of five hundred and seventy-seven million dollar bond in addition to item number B. Uh, I'm going to ask that the, that we don't ask for an East Valley campus, but rather we ask for a Coachella campus. In addition to item number B, uh, I'm going to ask that the, that we don't ask for an East Valley campus, but rather we ask for a Coachella campus. And they can do a study of where it's going to go, it doesn't matter. Um, was there anything else? But, and, and I'm going to ask the third one, the voters in 2016 did not approve a Palm Springs centric bond. Uh, as, as part of the, the, the legal bond language that was, uh, that was approved by our voters in the city of Coachella. So those are the three amendments that I'm going to support.
Mayor, uh, the fourth one would be, uh, uh, if you may, uh, you know, to, to, you know, funding for renovation in the Mecca campus is important too.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay.
That's in the bond language there. Funding for an enhancement of, of Mecca campus as part of this.
Just enhancement, but how about you put some classes in there?
For, for a modernization of the.
Yeah, awesome.
All right, there's a motion with those amendments, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second, can we get a roll call please?
Yes, Councilmember Delgado.
Hi.
Councilmember Galarza.
I.
Mayor Potom Gonzalez.
I.
Mayor Hernandez.
We'll move on now to item number 27, this is to provide staff direction for 2022 hometown heroes honorings. Well, we do this every year, um, do we have any nominations? Actually have one, I'd like to, uh, uh, recognize, uh, Captain Bonifacio De La Cruz, uh, as one of our hometown heroes.
We, um, do we need to have these names today? Can we have some time?
We don't, you know, have them today, but you should start thinking.
Uh, yeah, you know, I, I also think that perhaps we can, um, you know, I think, I think, I think, uh, having the privilege being here, we, we know individuals, uh, but maybe there's some stories that we don't know. And, and if we could put out, you know, a little survey on social media where people can nominate. And we can review some of those names, obviously, if we put it out there, we're going to get probably dozens and dozens of names and probably want to be strategic and, you know, have names throughout the year, not do them all in one year. But I, 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 I invite the idea of allowing our residents to, to nominate people. Uh, you know, understanding the privilege that we sit in and knowing the people that are sometimes very loud. But there are sometimes a lot of folks that are in the, in, in the behind doing all this good work. Um, and I think, I think we, we learn it when we are going to neighbors and meeting them in the parks or at restaurants, as the mayor said. Um, but, um, yeah, I, I, I'd like to ponder that idea, you know, because, you know, or else we'll just, you know, be a who's more popular to us, but, um, I agree with the name you mentioned and in addition to that, I would like to, um, bring this forth where we have folks.
Do a survey monkey for maybe two weeks if that would suit the council and then we will share that information back with the council.
Yeah, when's our next, uh, city council meeting or November?
November 9th, I believe it is. So we, we will, um, at that time, we would ask that the council be able to provide us directions so that we can make sure we have enough time to produce the plaques, um, that would then be mounted on the, the hometown hero wall.
Maritza, how many, uh, names are we looking for?
Um, this varies, uh, we do recommend two to three a year, but I, I think last year especially because we hadn't done it for two, two and a half years, um, we did six.
Okay. So two to three is what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will just say for the record that this is our time, right? Hometown heroes is our time in which we honor our own and those that have made substantial benefits, so. I'm going to nominate Rupert Feedman, no, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding, it's just, it's, uh, it's just important that we recognize that this is what we do, we have a, we have a beautiful wall on both sides and, uh, and that's where people's names go up and and, and recognizing their contributions to the city of Coachella, not just one year, but throughout, throughout. And so I think that's a, it's a, it's important that people recognize that this is what that hometown hero event is for. And to recognize folks that are just making, they're creating an invaluable difference to our community. So this item is going to be continued, council, think about it and then you have until November 9th. Because we need to get these plaques printed and get the background on families, et cetera.
You, you'll send us the names ahead of, ahead of the meeting, uh, Maritza, maybe we call it um, a week or so, or a few days before, so we can revise.
Yes, I, I'm suggesting that we do a two-week poll and then that way we have enough time to release that information to the council and also included, um, as we produce our staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to ask that this item be continued, is there a motion to continue?
Motion.
Motion to continue, next meeting, we'll move on to item number, and there's a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Our motion is continued to the next meeting. Item number 28, this is the Castro Mobile Home Park Water Consolidation Project, Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, this is a very exciting project, a feel-good project, a project that's been long time coming, but that's the nature of these types of projects, they're, they're very complicated. The funding source for them are, are tedious and requires a lot of, um, coordination with a lot of different agencies. Uh, before I get into the item, I just want to make it clear that, um, we are part of this project and, and collaboration with the state of California with the County of Riverside Department of, of Health. Um, they have asked us to come and, 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 um, lend assistance to this, um, private system that is failing. And so, uh, this is kind of been, uh, our involvement and so we're finally here, but, uh, the item before you is a recommendation to, to award a construction contract to Jacobson Engineering Construction in the amount of 762,000 $774 with the 15% contingency. And then I have a presentation that I want to start. So, you know, what are we doing here? We're, we're consolidating a small water system into our larger public water system that provides water mainly to our city, so. Quick background, um, we provide water to our residents by, by, by way of the Coachella Water Authority. We deliver water, uh, to about 45,000 people who are connected to our system. Um, there are folks that are not connected to our systems and those are folks that are relying on private wells to provide drinking water for themselves and for their tenants, uh, if there are, you know, remaining mobile home parks in the area. Our service area covers about 30 square miles, uh, 100% of our source of supply is groundwater. So what, you know, what's the purpose of this? Uh, again, we're going to consolidate the Castro's Trailer Park, uh, water system. Um, we're going to provide, uh, drinking water, uh, to these residents, uh, directly from our system. We're going to install, um, individual meters to each of these units and they will be paying, uh, our water rates. Uh, right now, they're being supplied by a master meter. Um, the owner pays for the, uh, for the bill on the master meter and then the owner tries to recover that, uh, that expense through, through the rent, so I think this is a, a much better way for, for families to kind of be uh, fully independent, uh, when it comes to the management of their, of their utilities. Uh, the project is also going to improve the water supply, the, the reliability and, and the water quality for the residents, uh, in general. Um, the well that was providing water for this park, um, had lesser water quality, their chromium six levels were higher. Uh, the water that we're going to be providing to our system is going to have, uh, in general, better water quality. So, you know, it, how, how do we get here? So, uh, be, a little bit before 2017. The system was, um, already kind of showing signs of failure. Uh, these systems again, because they're not a part of our system, they're private systems, they're regulated uh, by the Department of Environmental Health at Riverside County. So Riverside County is responsible for making sure that they're complying with the, with the Safe Drinking Water Act, that they're complying with all the regulations. The laws as it relates to providing safe drinking water, uh, for folks and so um, they were showing a, a habitual, uh, uh, just a violation after violation. Finally, in 2017, uh, the County of Riverside ordered a citation and compliance order, basically ordering the system to of secure a new source of supply. They recommended that they work with the city of Coachella to create a project that would consolidate their system into our system. Um, and that was the direction that, uh, that Riverside County gave, uh, the property owner. So with that, uh, you know, one of the first things that we had to do when, when we said, okay, you know, we, we want to be helpful, we, we want to be helpful to our residents. Um, and their well, their, their well completely failed, uh, uh, the casing deteriorated, um, the, the well is, you know, no good. Uh, it was, it was destroyed, it was, um, so they didn't, they didn't have a well, so what ended up happening is we gave them an emergency connection through this fire hydrant. So, a portion of this park is receiving water from this fire hydrant. And they've been receiving water from this fire hydrant for at least, you know, four years. Um, as, as, uh, there was a process which included the state of California providing funding to the design, to the planning. And then eventually finding a different source of funding for the construction, which we finally received and that's why we're here, we're finally uh, uh, rec, uh, our recommendation is to award a construction contract to do this work. So this is a, uh, uh, aerial of the park. Um, the area that we're going to consolidate is in red. Uh, this, this park has probably been here for about 40 years, I think it was probably built in two phases. Um, the, the first face was probably the face, um, in the red and then probably when they did phase number two, there was already a water line on Tyler and so then they connected the second face, which is not in red because that, that second face has water from the city. It's just that back portion, um, that doesn't have, uh, water from the city, they were, they were provided water from, uh, you can see that red dot there. That was the well that was providing water to that back end of the park, that's the well that failed. Uh, this project, um, we advertised bids, we received, uh, four bids. This was the lowest bid, it came out at, at, at that amount, 762,744, $774. The project's going to install 830 feet of a, a 8-inch pipeline, the series of valves, series of hydrants, we're going to install 45 connections, a connection to each of those units. Um, the grant that we receive from the Department of, of, um, Water Resources. Uh, fortunately, it, it does cover the amount, we, our grant was a little bit over a million, so. So this is a good, uh, a good, a good amount that we got, it, it covers our own, uh, impact fees. So we have to pay ourselves, uh, at least around $200,000, uh, um, an impact fee, so, so there's, there's a lot of room for that. Uh, we are also planning a, a groundbreaking ceremony on November 3rd, uh, at 10 a.m. We've been working with Rissette, with Public Works, uh, with Maritza to, to have a groundbreaking ceremony, this is again, a, a very, uh, big project in the sense that, um, we're, we're going to consolidate, uh, a system that, that basically is is looking for a solution and, and we're here to help, the state has been helpful. We've already confirmed, uh, the chair of the state water board is going to be here, that's, uh, Mr. Joaquines Kivel. Um, we're going to have folks here from the Department of Water Resource, we're going to have folks here from the Vision in Drinking Water. We're going to have folks here from Environmental Health, um, we're going to have folks here from, um, Natural Resources Agency. So these types of projects, you know, these, these are the types of projects that the state is pushing for across the state of California. Um, as they're trying to meet their objective, what they call the, the right to hu, uh, the human right to water. Uh, and so, you know, our recommend, our recommendation today is to award the construction contract to Jacobson Engineering. There's also, uh, another contract that, that goes with this and that's, uh, for Atlas Technical Consultants for materials testing, uh, for an amount not to exceed $50,000. Um, and that's basically, uh, what the project's about, uh, if you have any questions, we're open.
I'm kidding, this is a feel-good project.
Well, as long as we're doing.
Yes, yes, good work. Good work.
Is there a motion to approve or is there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Galarza.
I.
Mayor Potom Gonzalez.
I.
Mayor Hernandez.
I, we'll move on now to item 29, it's you Andrew for this training of road safety improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to present this project. Um, so this project is our ST134 pedestrian and road safety improvement project. If you recall, I presented, um, this project to council in May to go over the whole scope and, uh, yeah, everything this project is going to include. So city staff has identified a lot of street and road safety projects at 13 locations throughout the town. And I do want to clarify this project, it's under the ST134 banner, but it is a combination of multiple projects that are all on our CIP 2223 list. Um, it does incorporate elements from ST105 and ST113, which are our street rehab phase 17 and phase 18 projects. So we did look at, uh, projects all throughout the city and this has been a collaborative effort, um, looking at community outreach that's been done in the past, looking at our ATP plan, um, and discussing with the community, discussing with staff, areas throughout the city that we've gotten multiple complaints regarding safety, regarding pedestrian safety, regarding traffic safety. Um, so this project is really focused on improving areas throughout the entire city that have specific safety concerns. These improvements include median refugees and enhanced sidewalks and enhanced crosswalks. Uh, rapid flashing beacons at crosswalks, center separation medians, ADA ramps, safety striping, speed humps. Um, at the 13 locations, we will be including 18 enhanced street crossings. Three street crossings with push button rapid flashing beacons, 10 new ADA ramps. Nearly a mile of median, raised median center curves. Over two miles of road restriping, 62,000 square feet, slurry seal and four speed hubs. I'm going to go through all the 13 locations, I'm going to kind of go quickly, if you have questions, feel free to stop me and ask if you have questions about each location. So one of the locations focusing is on Tripoli, uh, as soon as you cross from Tisha Chavez on Avenue 52 at the intersection of Tripoli. The traffic merges there, but we have, uh, unprotected crossing at that location. So in order to improve the safety, we want to put a median there. Uh, we want to move the crosswalk to the other side of the street where it's a shorter distance and we can improve the safety for the crossings there. This will include three new ADA ramps and enhancement of two crosswalks. Staying on Avenue 52, a little bit further down at the intersection of Las Palmas. Again, we want to put in a, a protected median, uh, so that pedestrians have that intermediate location and then rebuild both of the ADA ramps. Uh, currently, there is a crosswalk at this location and there's not even an ADA ramp on the north side, so, uh, making all these intersections compliant, improving the ADA access at this location. Shady lane at Avenue 52. This is our trailhead for our shady lane bike path. But currently, the crosswalk goes to a non-ADA ramp. And there's not really a good connection for bicycles pedestrians to actually get to that trailhead. Uh, so we want to really expand upon that, have a wide and fighting ADA ramp that ties directly into that bike path. Um, you know, and really promotes the, the future growth and use of those, of that recreational facility. This will also include the protected left-hand pockets. Um, and this will be a flashing beacon location with a new flashing beacon placed in the center of the road in the median as well. To help increase that pedestrian safety and make that crosswalk more visible. Uh, this entire location from shady all the way to Genoa will also be slurry seal. This location has been restripped several times in the past, a lot of that striping is bleeding through, you can see it, it makes very confusing for drivers. Um, makes it confusing what lane you're supposed to be in, um, where the stop signs are supposed to be. So we will be slurry sealing this entire area, restriping the entire area. And that should really help with the traffic safety here at Genoa, improving both of those crossings and placing flashing red stop signs, uh, I know we do have a safety issue here where people don't even realize there's a a stop sign there and they blow right through it. So really highlighting that and having the, the solar powered flashing stop signs at this location and enhancing all four of the sections. So this can become a much safer crossing location. This is an existing median, um, where there is no left-hand turn, so we want to put a center raised concrete median here, uh, just to give pedestrians that extra safety where they have that pedestrian refuge behind a, a raised median. This is at the intersection of Avenue 52 and, uh, uh, sorry, Avenue 51. Um, moving on, this is a project that's been discussed in, at city council a couple of times. Moving on, this is a project that's been discussed in, at City Council a couple of times. This is Avenue fifty-three. From Shady to Tyler. This obviously directly north of the Armatech Fields where soccer is played, a lot of families hang out there. But because this is very wide street, we've had problems with drag racing and people doing donuts in the street. So in order to, uh, try to prevent that, we do wanna place a median from Tyler all the way to Shady Avenue and improve the pedestrian crossing at Shady and Tyler, or Shady and Avenue fifty-three as well. Hoping that by placing that median, that will eliminate the drag racing, uh, eliminate the donuts. You can't really drag race a donut if you have a race median in the middle of the road.
Are we gonna landscape that median?
It will not be landscaped because it will only be four feet wide, uh, cause to fit within the existing paved area. But it will be, uh, it will be stamped concrete, will be decorative and, and stamped concrete.
Maybe we wanna think about in the future, maybe just pre-stubbing that with electrical. And maybe what we do, if we're not gonna do a decorative, or if we're not gonna do landscaping, look at some art in public places there. So maybe some cool sculptures in the future or something, because when you have mediums like that, let's, let's try to activate them in some way or let make them look attractive in some way, just concrete, which I can appreciate is, you know, but I know you're the engineer, you know, but, but just think about maybe adding some conduit and, uh, adding future art in that, in those mediums.
Speed bumps at all? None, not, not adding speed bumps in that area?
Uh, there are no speed bumps proposed on Avenue fifty-three. Towards the end of the presentation, um, the last slide is about speed humps. And then I'll discuss areas where you've had requests for speed humps where, uh, maybe they're not appropriate.
Would this be an appropriate place for them, given that it's a history of drag racing and donut making?
I think the, the median will, is the best first step if we still have prompts in the future, potentially speed hump could be considered.
What about generally, since even though it's not our park that, that, you know, speed bump near, there's still kids that play there.
Yes.
On Avenue thirty-three, you know, we have speed bumps all across Frederick. It's a lot of mine. I avoid Frederick. But, you know, what, what is, you know, there's drag racing there and there's, you know, a part there. We get to have any speed bumps or not recommended at all?
It would not be recommended because Avenue fifty-three is an arterial. So generally speaking, you do not put speed humps on four-lane roads. You don't put speed humps on arterials.
Okay.
Um, when it comes to fire response and police response, um, having speed humps on those type of streets is not recommended.
Oh, good to, yeah. Thank you for that.
There was a very lively discussion earlier about education. Very much appreciate that. I always have a soft spot in my heart for education, so I think that's fantastic. And the next two projects are both education focused. So some of the complaints we've gotten has been at the Nova Academy, which is on Frederick Street. A lot of the children before and after school, there's a lot of jaywalking that occurs, and they're just crossing this five-lane road in order to get picked up or to go to the other side of the street, uh, cause it's kind of a long ways to the intersection all the way back up to Avenue fifty-two where there's a signalized crossing. So we do wanna put a protected crossing right up the Nova Academy with the flashing beacons, so that we can have that safe crossing for the children at the, uh, before and after school. You will notice in this location, because it is Frederick and Frederick is an arterial, rather than placing speed humps, um, which become, you know, problematic where people have to hit them twenty-four hours a day, uh, we're placing the raised detectors where it, it's that rumble strip.
Okay.
So on arterials, it's generally preferred to put the rumble strips instead. That gets a loud sound on your tires. It gets your attention. You know, gets you to slow down at the intersection and see what is in front of you without actually, um, slowing down or deterring the emergency response on those arterial streets. So at this location, we have the rumble strips that are placed on either side of the crosswalk to really highlight that and give that, that additional attention, so that people will notice that crosswalk and slow down for the kids there.
So you're extending Frederick and, uh, I avoid the other side of Frederick now. This, this, uh, good. I just, you know, we're quick. I, yesterday I was at Nova Academy. Uh, in the back, they have some houses, uh, Olive Crest, and they have some group homes. And I was just there and it was, and it was so nice to learn more about what they're doing there. It's pretty dope. I, I just bring it up cause it was there. I was just there yesterday touring their facilities and it's, I just thought it was a school. Behind the school, there's four homes where they house people, uh, single moms.
With their children.
Children and, you know, sometimes children alone where their parents are incarcerated or other stuff. And I just thought, I just thought of the school along, but behind that, there's a little community. So, uh, I just wanted to bring it up, you know, Miranda, maybe we could bring them up soon to do a presentation about what they do. So I, you know, this whole time I just thought it was a school there.
And, and this location will have the, the whole flashing beacons. So in the future, since you mentioned they are expanding Frederick to the south, uh, with the new Belisima project, Frederick's already expanded in the north. So this block from Nova Academy down to Avenue fifty-three is the only portion of Frederick that has been fully widened yet. Hopefully that development will move it in the near future, and this design will be able to be incorporated with that design when the, when the street gets wider. So these new ADA ramps, the flashing beacons, you know, they'll all be reusable and still functional, uh, with the expanded, uh, width on Frederick as well.
So on fifty-three, you're mentioning it. I, 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 I drive by it every day and I see now they're, they're expanding the, the, the road that's already constructed. Are we gonna learn about that today too, or?
No, cause that's not a city project. That's a private development project.
But that, that extra land is that, is that, I was gonna mention, is that gonna be road? Cause they, they, there's a big, like,
Councilmember, can he finish the presentation?
I wanna, no, I mean, you talk so much, man. Few times I'm asking questions.
Yes, they are gonna be widening.
Okay.
Frederick tree is being widened with the Belisima project by the, by the private developer.
Thank you.
So it'll be.
See, it's a simple, simple answer.
It'll be one, it'll be one lane south, two lanes north. And they're completely redoing the intersection at, uh, Frederick and Belisima as well, so that wonky. Yes.
Yeah.
That, that project was actually originally considered as part of this road and pedestrian safety project because of that skewed intersection and the gap in the sidewalk.
Yeah.
South of fifty-three. But since the developer moved on that project and that became a, um, that was able to be privately funded by the developer. So that was originally tied to this project and was dropped since we were able to get that privately funded.
See, it's not that question.
Moving on. Another crossing at a school location at, uh, this is on Valley Road at Cesar Chavez. So this is, um, servicing Valley View Elementary School. Currently, the worry is that children and parents will, you know, run across the street, cause they don't wanna have to go up to Avenue fifty-two or Avenue fifty-three to use the signalized cross, crossing. So at this intersection, we are going to improve a full four crossings, uh, do new ADA ramps at the access road, uh, new ADA ramps at the, at the median that separates the access road from Cesar Chavez, and install the flashing pedestrian beacons, so we can have a safe crossing at this location. Then we'll also be installing the no pedestrian crossing on the north side of the intersection as well, to make sure that people use the safe crossing location. Other projects we're doing are, uh, we have several striping projects we're doing, and I do wanna point out that these are not maintenance projects. We're actually changing the striping on the road, changing the alignment in order to improve capacity, improve service and improve safety. One of the locations is Van Buren from Avenue forty-nine. Down to Morada. These streets were widened, uh, by private developers, but they were never striped out, um, according to our, our general plan. They were never striped with the median. So right now it's just four lanes. There's no turn lane. Uh, so we have gotten a lot of complaints from the community, uh, off of Fiesta Road and the community off of Moonlight Drive as well, that the turn lanes are not exist, do not exist there. So we are going to re-strip this at the center turn lanes all the way through, um, extend that all the way to Avenue forty-nine and approve the striping Avenue forty-nine to improve the, the safety of that intersection and improve the safety of all of these residential intersections as well. And they increase the capacity of the road by installing the fifth lane in the middle for the center turn. Another project is at Premetipo Drive and Avenue fifty-two, uh, at this location. The merging lane overlaps with what is an apparent right-hand or left-hand turn lane into the community. Which causes a safety concern where the issue is people are looking over their shoulder trying to merge, and there's, you know, very high potential for rear-end collisions at this intersection. Uh, so we wanna move that merging lane to the east, um, so that we consolidate the vehicles into one lane prior to that left-hand turn pocket and actually install a formal left-hand turn pocket, so we can have safe turn movements into that, in and out of that community. And the last striping project is on Calhoun, and this is from Avenue forty-nine to Avenue forty-eight. Again, adding capacity, adding that center turn lane along the entire stretch. And on this project, uh, because we have the width available, we'll also be adding the bike lanes on both northbound and southbound lanes. And striping the entire street with red curbs, um, so that we can accommodate that by traffic, the two lanes in each direction and the center turn. And the last project or the, the last slide I have is regarding speed humps. I did already go over this a little bit. We have this is, um, basically all of the approvable speed hump requests that we've had since our last major, uh, speed hump project. We have had other requests for speed humps, but they've been on arterials and people have called and asked for speed humps on Avenue fifty or, or Avenue fifty-two. And those are inappropriate locations to put speed humps. Um, so we have had other requests, but they are not approval locations. So the three locations on the left are all between that community that is at the intersection of Frederick and fifty-four. Uh, right now, a lot of the traffic from the high school and a lot of the traffic from the casino, rather than coming to the intersection of Frederick and fifty-four, they like to cut through this community. They go very fast through there, so they, they come up Slate and then they turn on Scarlet. Uh, so we are proposing three speed humps in that community, two on Scarlet Way and one on Slate Drive. To hopefully prevent people from speeding through that community and trying to take that shortcut like they currently do. And the last speed hump has been one that, uh, the residents have been requesting for a while. And this is at the intersection of Lotwood Road to Drive and Avenue fifty-two. We recently added speed humps to that community with our last project, uh, but we did get some feedback on the community that they were concerned. There's a way to kinda cut through the community rather quickly, and they wanted, the community had requested this additional speed hump near the entrance to prevent people from going real fast at that first intersection into the community. So as far as fiscal impact, I'd mentioned, these are all projects that were on the city's approved, uh, C I P budget. They do include elements from S T one oh five, S T one thirteen, which are the street rehab phases seventeen to eighteen, as well as S T one thirty-four. We advertised the project and our lowest responsive bidder was Jacobson Construction, and their bid was at one point four nine eight, two sixty-seven. That was actually very close to our engineers estimate. Our engineers estimate was, uh, one point two five million. So, um, this was not, uh, an outlandish price by any way. It was very much in the expected range of where we expect the project to land. Other costs, we have about a hundred thou- or we have a hundred thousand dollars for all of our engineering. That includes the design, that includes construction engineering and our construction testing. And we're requesting the additional twenty percent of construction contingency. So the total project cost, including design, construction, engineering, construction and contingency comes to one point eight nine seven million dollars. As far as the funding, it'll be, uh, primarily funded with S B one funds as approved in the C I P budget, uh, at one point five six nine million. And the remainder, um, approximately twenty percent of the project will be funded by Street Def, uh, for the remainder of the three hundred and twenty-eight, eight fifty-eight. Since that, sorry, one more slide. So the staff recommendations, um, we are asking that you offer as a city manager to execute a construction contract with Jacobson Engineering Construction in an amount of one million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven and ninety-eight cents, plus the twenty percent contingency. Uh, we're asking to amend the contract with K O A for, uh, an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. That's so that we can keep them on to complete construction engineering during the course of the project. And also, we are asking that you offer as city manager to enter a contract with Atlas Technical Consultants for the materials testing during the project.
All right. I, I think this is, uh, this is a great presentation and a lot of needed safety improvements and speed bumps, et cetera. So council, what are your wishes?
I think it's great too. I, you know, I had a lot of questions, uh, I think I already answered at the front. You know, one thing that I, I think, I, one, one that comes to mind, and then we, we need a partner with the county. I brought it up before when, um, and with the school district too, um, you know, I didn't see it today as a, uh, cause it's party show with counties, uh, uh, on through fifty-first between Calvin and Van Buren, that part, part of its county, part of its hours. And Core Mountain is right there near the new home housing project that, that were, so that Core Mountain is, is, is no bus, no buses. All the students have to either walk or get dropped off. And that includes people that live in La Colonia, the new project that's being developed across Colonia, now those communities. Students, if they wanna walk through Calvin down to fifty-one, they, they walk through, uh, there's no sidewalks. There's no, it's just a, yeah, it's, I'm talking about future project. There's no sidewalks, there's none. But we need a part of the camp, part of the issue is that it's, it's also county land on one end. And so, and Imagine Schools is right there too, and ima- and talking about schools, we've heard a lot of complaints about the, uh, Imagine School traffic down that same route. So I just, uh, wanted to bring that up as a, as a, as a project to consider, uh, next or next go-around. Because we have two schools right there, um, that are both no busing for them, so. Hopefully the state or the federal government creates a mandate for busing and they add money to it. Today, unfortunately, busing is not a mandate for school districts, so there's no money attached. So that's why school districts have to either search for grants or general monies, general funds, monies for, for this. And, you know, I know if they could provide buses for all schools, they would, but that's not a mandate yet, and so it should be a mandate with money attached.
Relative to the sidewalk on Calhoun between fifty and fifty-one, um, that actually is being constructed right now by the Mariposa Point Project. So that will, the sidewalk is going to continue to our city limits. So the remainder from the southwest corner of Mariposa Point down to, um, the intersection of fifty-one and Calhoun is all county property. We have been in discussions with, um, with the county, uh, to discuss potentially adding that additional sidewalk. But that would be a county project, but we are, we are actively pushing them to try to incorporate that remaining piece, so we can get that pedestrian connectivity down to Imagine School. But that would be a county project.
And then, and then, and then, but I'm just talking down fifty-one.
Yeah.
Cause you're talking, you're talking Calvin, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then down fifty-one too.
With respect to these projects.
Good.
They're good. I think when you look at just kind of the interior of our city. And we're doing a good job in making sure there is pedestrian safety and enhancing it. I, you know, I, uh, I think we're gonna have to continue to, to do some of that, but I think we gotta probably next year start shifting a little bit and, and doing a little bit more road rehab, uh, making sure that we can continue to maintain the appropriate grade levels of our street. You know, there is, there, there are a lot of streets that are kind of cracking, need more slurries or, or crack seals uh, in order to kind of prolong the, the life of them. But I think right now, for the purpose of S B one dollars today and getting this project off the ground, it's a good use and let's get it. and getting this project off the ground, it's a good use and let's get it done and and really, really improve our infrastructure in the city. I'll motion to approve if there are no other questions. Is there a second? There's a second. Can we get a roll call please?
Yes, Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
Hi, you know what, it is eight twenty-six and I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to public hearing, or I'm sorry, public comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the city board corporation on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda? But is within subject matter jurisdiction thereof, please send me your comments in three minutes. Is there any one on the would like to speak to the city council?
There's no
See none, anybody here inside the I select to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda. See none, we'll move on now to item number thirty. This is approval of art in public places for the Coachella Valley Art Mural. Of the Accra Shore Arena and the amount of ten thousand dollars. Gabriel, is that you or is that?
Uh, yes, mayor, that is me. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Perfect. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Selena Jimenez, Grant's Manager and Staff Liaison to the Arts Commission, Cultural and Arts Commission. The item before you is item number thirty and it's basically a mural proposal at Accra Shore Arena by Frank Lemus. This is a part of the Desert Nine Art Initiative proposal that has been put together in partnership with the Nine Desert Cities and a local mural curator, Flat Black Art Supply. So the Desert Nine Art Initiative seeks to install nine art murals at the Accra Shore Arena Iceplex. By local artists that celebrate the Coachella Valley. Showcase along the massive iceplex walls, each mural, each mural will be ten foot wide and by twenty feet in height. And basically, sorry about that. And basically, the hope is that the murals are bold in color that, you know, that they display iconic settings and whimsical interpretations of desert landscapes. As they hope that they will serve for the perfect Instagrammable background highlighting the unique qualities of each city. Both the city and artist's social handles will be featured and each mural will feature a connected graphic grid. And so here's a rendering, not to scale, of course, but of how the murals will be put up at the Iceplex at Accra Shore Arena. And it is forecasted that more than two hundred thousand people will be frequenting the Iceplex annually. And so the murals can be seen from multiple levels and it will take visitors and locals on a visual journey across our valley. Accra Shore Arena will provide the overarching theme for the murals, which will celebrate unity and diversity of our remarkable landscape and culture. Cities will collaborate with Flat Black Art Supply and Accra Shore Arena to select artists for the project. And Accra Shore Arena will approve the final artwork. The murals will be featured at the arena for a minimum of three years. And so their, the request for sponsorship is in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And the sponsorship will include curation and creation of all artwork, installation and insurance requirements. Artist recognition plaques and large format, format signage highlighting the collection and each desert city produced by Accra Shore Arena. One thousand oversized postcards representing each mural produced by Accra Shore Arena. Invitations for up to ten guests to attend the Desert Nine Reveal Party produced by Accra Shore Arena. And then Accra Shore Arena website highlight, minimum one posts and story via social channels at Accra Shore Arena and feature in the arena e-newsletter. And inclusion in arena opening PR campaign distributed nationally. And here is the timeline. So basically mural concepts are approved now until October seventeenth. And then the artist will begin the mural painting process between November one and the thirtieth. And then the plaque signage and installation and touch-ups will occur in December with an opening culminating in an opening celebration and mural unveiling, January fourth of twenty twenty-three. And the artist selected for the Accra Shore Arena mural is a gentleman named Frank Lemus. Frank Lemus was born in Sala, Mexico and immigrated to the United States when he was three years old and grew up in the city of Coachella. In two thousand eleven, Frank was amongst the artists who painted a mural segment size sixty by fifty-five feet on the largest Chicano art mural known as the Shady Lane mural. And has since been participating in community events that empower the youth. After graduating from Coachella Valley High School, Frank enlisted in the US Army and served tours in Germany, Afghanistan and Italy as a mech- mechanic. After his military tours, he returned to the Coachella Valley to pursue his passion, passion for art. Levens holds an associate's degree in studio arts from College of the Desert and is currently completing his bachelor's degree in studio arts at C S U Long Beach. His work consists of multiple mediums, including paintings and ceramics. Frank's works have been on exhibit at College of the Desert, Coachella Valley Music and Arts Festival, the Palm Springs Art Museum, Synergy Music and Arts Festival and other notable venues. And this is the proposed mural rendering. As you can see, there's touches to agriculture. You know, social justice and and just, you know, the cultural elements that comprise the Coachella Valley and the city of Coachella. Let me know if I can, if everyone has had a chance to have a look at this proposed mural rendering.
Next, please.
And this concludes our presentation. Staff's recommendation is that council considers approving the proposed mural piece.
Just a point of of clarity here, maybe it's for you, Carlos. I know what's being proposed is that this come out of the Arts in Public Places fee. But if I'm not mistaken, that's a diff fee that's associated with arts within the city of Coachella. And so then can that diff fee then be used outside of the city of Coachella?
It's a good point. We have to check on that just to make sure that it's generally, it's it's a broad, it's not just necessarily for murals, it's a little more expansive than used by the historic city itself.
Yeah, so that's my only point is that if I know that
We'd have to look at the orders, make sure that it doesn't allow for also art to be outside.
Outside of the city representing the city. And if it's, and if it's not, then maybe we want to look at general fund for this. As opposed to the Arts in Public Places, because it'd be more of an economic developmental that highlights Coachella, right? Because if it's only a three-year deal, you know, so that's, if you could figure that out, that'd be great. But I'm certainly supportive of of this concept.
Yeah, you know, I I I like it too and and since this is already a rendering, maybe we can invite you know, Frank to come and, you know, we can, we can print it out and sort of celebrate it too, you know, I think, you know, Frank went to CB High School, as I mentioned. When I was a student in high school, he was leading workshops here at the time, the mayor was a lot of Garcia and Steven was a council member and Rices needed a spot to do art and they put a trailer right here, right in front of City Hall. There's a trailer and in that trailer, Frank used to do stencil workshops, he would teach all, all of us how to do stencils. And I remember learning how to do stencils from, from, from Frank and then ended up leaving to, you know, join the military and I was a senior that then and I, and I thought I was a stencil pro. And I started teaching middle school kids how to do stencils as a form of expressing art versus versus, you know, doing other stuff that's not productive. I think I didn't do as good of a message as Frank in talking about the importance of expressing art as a form, I mean, art as a form of expression, social justice, because a few weeks later, we ended up getting a call from Bobby Duke Middle School that that these kids got caught stenciling their campus. And they, they were told that they learned that Rices. And so, and they're like, definitely taught us how to do stencils, but but Frank, the point is a story, just a, you know, memory that I share, I think Frank's been, you know, this was more than ten years ago and 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 to this day, he's, you know, getting involved and and doing art, representing our community. And now that, you know, Accra Shore is gonna be open, I already got tickets to C Group of Freedom, I know they mentioned them earlier and and I'm gonna, you know, be there and it'd be amazing though that we can point to that, say, you know, well, like that guy from Coachella did that, you know? I'm very excited about this project. I think Frank's a great artist and I think he's an example to artists in our city that there's no limits and, you know, and if we embrace it here and show that, then we do that. I I thank the Arts Commission for reviewing this and approving it already too, so. Yeah, other comments?
I'm complete support. I love the rendering. I think it's a very good rendition of who we are in Coachella. I like, I like that render. Excited to see it outside of Coachella, representing our city.
There are no other questions. I'm in a motion to approve with an amendment that is read either, either development impact fees or general fund. And then you guys can look into that and then use the appropriate accounts. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Potem Gonzalez. Can we get a roll call please?
Yes, Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Galarza.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Move on now to item number thirty-one and thirty-two. Just, I understand that we like Michelle Guerrero and I'm just wondering why two of them? And there should be more artists that are allowed to to do work. And so my whole thing is either one or the other, not both.
Can, can
We can get a presentation.
Selena, can you, can you present? I I I'm very open to.
Yes, I can begin. Thank you, mayor. So basically, items number thirty-one and thirty-two are art murals by Michelle Guerrero. Commem- commemorating the city's seventy-fifth anniversary. And to answer the mayor's question about the there being two of them. And so basically, we were hoping to hit Michelle's intent was to to have her murals be seen by a busy corridor on Grayford Boulevard. And then the other one that is being proposed is that on the US Postal Service building at where there's lots of foot traffic, lots of people, it's in our downtown. So this is Michelle Ruby Guerrero with Chuchu. Chuchu is her signature character. Michelle Guerrero is also known as Mr. B Baby and stands for Michelle Ruby Brown Baby and she was born and raised in San Diego, California. She uses the elements of her heritage as an inspiration for her striking and lively artwork. Mr. B Baby is heavily influenced by her community as well as her Puerto Rican Mexican heritage. By combining vibrant colors with traditional imagery, Michelle is able to uplift her audiences and intrigue her viewers. Her, her aim is to bring happiness and joy to her collectors and community while also having stronger messages intertwined, all of which are open to the viewer's interpretation. Michelle holds a bachelor's degree in fine arts from the Academy of Art University in San Francisco, California. Her art murals have been commissioned by the following playing companies. Coachella Music and Arts Festival, Dodger Stadium, Sony Electronics, Cheetos, The Getty, El Boyo Local, City Chula Vista, the San Diego Jewish Center, Los Angeles Art District, Random House, Women on Walls, Puebla, Mexico, Pandora Jewelry, Converse Shoes, UPS and Kids of Immigrants. And she has had her artwork displayed at various galleries that include Chicano Park, Chimaya Gallery and just another gallery. These are some samples of her artwork. Here, Chuchu is at Dodger Stadium. And then here, this is the Cheeto, I guess, mural with Chuchu in the background. And then another one depicting Chuchu riding a bull. And additional samples of her artwork. And the the first proposed mural location is on the corner of Sixth Street and Palm Avenue on this side of the post office. So part of the process required that we check with the property owner to ensure that he would be okay with a mural being installed on on this building. And so this is the proposed mural on the US Post Office Building. And it's Chuchu writing a letter to Maria in Mexico. And so here he is, a postman delivering, you know, mail. And basically, it's, it's, you know, the, the nod here is to our community, but also to the post office who has served a very important purpose for our people who have loved ones in in Mexico. And so basically, this post office is a place where many people send packages, love notes, you know, other, other items that are sent back and forth between the two countries. And so this, this mural depicts you know, just a joyous occasion. It's an opportunity for families to come and take a picture here. Chuchu is actually a piñata character. He is made of feathers because the original, meaning the the original, I guess, origin of piñatas has an aesthetic connection where the, like a clay pot was made and then it was covered in blue feathers and and it was supposed to represent good tidings for the harvest season. And so that's, that's why he looks like this and he, and he has all the colors that the indigenous culture used to create their, the the first form of a piñata, although I guess the origins are actually from China. But, but anyway, so this is the proposed, sorry, my light turning off. This is the proposed mural for the US Post Office Building. And I will stop here just so that unless you, unless council would like for me to go ahead and also introduce item number thirty-two, which is also an art mural.
Go ahead.
So the next mural location would be Grayford Boulevard. And as you all know, many vehicles are on Grayford Boulevard every day. It's a very busy corridor for the city of Coachella. And so having a mural here on this wall would not only entice people to perhaps pull in and come into our downtown, come in for a cup of coffee or a torta Jalisco's restaurant, but you know, it's also a photo op. And if you know, on Fifth Street, there's the Sunbus stop that's over the Sunbus, Sunline Transit Station. And so there's a lot of people just kind of waiting there. And so this is on Grayford Boulevard and Fifth Street. And so the proposed art mural is at Anaya's Towing Building. And the artist has you know, just kind of created a mural that is welcoming, welcome to the city of Coachella and it's, you know, Chuchu's here in the car with a Maria and then here's a nod to the historic Route one eleven. And 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 the desert theme. And so it's supposed to be whimsical, fun and enticing people to come and take their picture here.
What's the intersection again for that one?
Uh, this is, um, Grayford Boulevard and Fifth Street. So here's Fifth Street and then back here, if you could envision there's the Sunline Transit Station.
Yeah.
Kind of give you guys like an idea of where this is. And so this is quite a large wall. She measured it and I didn't get the measurements, but it's quite a large wall. And that concludes my presentation for those two art murals.
Just elaborate on those items to answer the mayor's question. Sometimes we have to be opportunistic. The, these walls are privately owned. And the owners have historically denied future, past requests for art murals. And sometimes we have a world-renowned artist here that's willing to do two murals and two property owners that are giving us the opportunity to put murals on the walls. Sometimes the stars align and we got to take advantage of that opportunity. So that's why we want to move forward with these two walls, these two murals and get this amazing artist into our city.
I, I, I support it. I, I think that, you know, the opportunity to to do such a thing. You know, and 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 do that, you know, what, what, what comes to my mind though is you know, I know, I like how, you know, the one on one eleven, this is one eleven, but in in our section of the city, a lot of one elevens on the Street for Boulevard. Do we wanna, you know, make that change instead of like having, you know, it's just a thought, like instead of it saying one eleven? I could say a great for Boulevard and it's like a street sign versus that, you know, route, you know, just to make it more local. Just that, you know, I, I think it's a good opportunity, love the art, love the creativity that comes behind it, the origins, the story and including culture and something that's pop, you know, it's a, I think it's, I think it's nice, you I think it's, I think it's nice, you know, it, it, people uh, are, will, will enjoy such a thing coming into town.
Just uh, off from my point of view here. We've had world-renowned artists here. We have them in downtown.
Yeah.
And they're attracted to Coachella because of our name. We have no artist that has two walls. And there's an opportunity to get another world-renowned artist in the city. And we should, we shouldn't be impatient. We should just wait. Um, I, I look at, you know, the one on 111. While I can appreciate it, I don't see any choya cactus in Coachella or anywhere along our. Uh, uh, our desert scape. That's the wrong desert. You know, and, and while I could appreciate, you know, 111, I, I do like Grayford Boulevard as a. As a, as kind of a, just a. As a name, we all know it as that, you know, so. That's my only concern is that why, why are we giving two, two walls to one artist? We can, we have world-renowned artists that have come here. We shouldn't be impatient. Let's just choose one and then we'll go from there, uh, you know, and, and. But if you guys want to, that's, that's okay. But I, 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 I'm only going to support one at this point.
I think we, we have a lot more walls that, than the city. And, and I think that.
In downtown, we don't. The original concept of Coachella walls. Uh, was to really kind of highlight and do a lot of different things in downtown and, and. And. You know, is there a theme in downtown Coachella with all the walls, you know, and so that's something that.
Yeah, I can just clarify. Uh, item number thirty-one is one of the murals. That's one off Grayford. And then item thirty-two is. A mural of the post office. So I think we're kind of discussing both items.
Yeah.
Where we're kind of discussing item thirty-one, then we're on Grayford and then item thirty-two.
Yes.
And just to elaborate on the grateful, we definitely can make that conversion. Our rationale behind that was to kind of promote what Route sixty-six was in San Bernardino. And you know, we kind of wanted to duplicate that with Route 111. And we put that. On our Urban Green Project, we put Route 111 on the street. And we kind of want to duplicate that just for that reason. But we definitely can make that conversion of council.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, the mayor made a good point about the cactuses. Me, I think that could be something that we can. It is not the first time that we, you know, we're not, are, are, you know, all of us aren't here are artists like I talked about. I did dental stuff, but. But uh, but you know, like, just who is, you know, maybe we could have uh, more, uh, something that's more local to Coachella regarding like the. You know, the, 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 the cactus that are there. But um, like I, I.
Send, send them back to the commission.
I uh. What? I mean, I'm in support of, 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 of both. And I don't have anything to change on the. On the mural, on the one on the US Post Office. Today, um, I think it's, you know, fun. Brings light to that. Post office. But uh.
I, I'm in support of both, but I would, I would agree the one on the Grayford should be a little more, um, yeah. I, it could be no file. It could be something different. The cactus, uh, of.
I would like to give another artist an opportunity. And I know this, we've had this conversations before. But I really would like to put an RFP out and allow. You know, other artists to provide the rendering. And then put it through the commission and then even. You know, put it out to our community and let them have a buy-in as to what, you know, rendering or, or. Mural they would like to see. Because what we're getting a lot of is that people are tired of murals coming into the city, but. Maybe if they had an opportunity to vote on one as well and then put it through the commission, then we would have a more. Positive response from more members of the community. But I do think that we should give. Others an opportunity. If you go through, I think it's um. Forty-nine, Avenue forty-nine, I believe it is. You have two murals that people. You know, that somebody kind of put on the, on one of the residential community walls. And so I think that they should also have an opportunity to provide some type of rendering if given an opportunity. If they knew that there was a wall in the downtown to be able to do a mirror on, I think that they should also be given that opportunity to. Provide one.
I, I, I still think there's plenty more walls. I think that. You know, it, it, all over the city, I, I, uh, both of these have been not only staff reviewed. Uh, we, they've been, the, the owners approved them. The Art Commission approved them. Uh, you know, I, 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 I think that, you know, this, we're, we're here today. We can approve both and still give the opportunity to more artists. To provide art to City Coachella. You know, it, it's, it's a, uh, you know, there, there's endless opportunity uh, to bring forth. I think that. Um, these have gone through many different, you know, routes or have been going through a little different. Desk, that, that you'd ask, we added an arts commission for the purpose of viewing such. But I, 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 I'm, I'm still in, in support of, of moving both along.
Carlos, uh, I got a. Want a clarity and it just hit me right now. You know, and, and I may have a conflict on this simply because of the fact that I do own. Property, you know, five to a thousand feet from the rendering. I know the public, you know, conflict of interest code is very clear on. Public improvements, like in terms of physical environment. I don't know that it actually touches the art.
I think it's going to might impact the value of any interest you may have up or down within five hundred feet of the perception of the conflict.
Yeah.
There is an impact on the value in five thousand.
I know, but I.
Over a thousand.
Yeah.
It's, it's um. Over a thousand feet, so I'm saying there is not an impact on like property. But I can discuss more.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what does art do there? And I'm just sort of an abundance of caution. Let me just go ahead and abstain. Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve both.
I'll second that motion.
So, so if council's going to move forward with, with both, I do ask that in the future. That, you know, I've been asking for this before in the past, that, that we put an RFP out. To make sure that we're giving everyone an opportunity to provide some type of rendering. You know, if there's a wall, if there's an opportunity where we want to put a mural. You know, that we give everyone an opportunity, including the city of Coachella residents. We have a lot of people that are talented here. A lot of young folks that are talented here, so that we give them an opportunity to, you know, provide, you know, a nice piece of art. But then also to be able to make, you know, some, some money off of it as well.
Yeah, a hundred. Oh, I, I'm in support of.
We have a, a first, we have a.
I, I, I'm in support of what, what Councilmember Delgado said. We don't, and, and part of the reason why. Mayor Protem Gonzalez and I brought forth the resolution to create an arts commission. Is to give the uh, a space for, and I know not everyone was supportive of, of the commission at first. But, but now it exists and, and we did that to create space for local artists to make these, to have these conversations. And. I, I agree that, that we need to have more of that and, and, and anyway that would create more opportunities for local artists to do such. I, 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 I tasked the Arts Commission that's filled with artists to, to talk about this in their, in their next meeting. On, on ways that they as artists feel that the city could do better. To include it because what, what, what the goal of us was to do is that we're here as obviously as, as we have the, the, the last vote, but we understand that some of us. Are, are, are just a staster of some of the shortfall uh, in the arts. And so uh, and so that, that purpose is filled with the Arts Commission. So. Um, they're there now, you know, the, the, I think they had, there's a lot of opportunity and a lot of capacity. With that commission. Um, and so maybe, you know, for, for staff, we're working on the agenda net for, for their next meeting. Um, you know, this could be a topic for them to, to bring forth to us to approve. Um, an RFP process or whatever they come up with as artists that they feel that the city could do more of.
And so just for clarification, um, because I served in the Art Commission since two thousand fourteen. The city of Coachella has had an Art Commission for many, many years, maybe a decade now. The only difference is it's been separated and, and now rightfully so, other commissioners have been appointed to that, but. The same process that is going on now with the uh, Art Commission is the same process. That I went through. You know, and almost nine years ago. The only thing is that obviously now others have an opportunity to place a vote to it, but the process that we're going through now. Hasn't changed at all. Uh, you know, actually, when I was on the Art Commission, there was a lot more uh, meetings. That were happening. I believe only two have happened since it's been converted.
Right, and that was because of the pandemic, right?
The planning commission, uh, you know, is separate than the Culture and Arts Commission that. That, that we brought forth and created filled with artists. There's commissioners there. I think if, if we need to see, if there's a, a, an issue where. People aren't attending or can't attend, then, then let us know and, and maybe soon we can see if maybe folks that have initially applied. Aren't interested anymore. There was more than enough applicants. I think we had an abundance of applicants for that committee. And we selected five, but if there's folks that aren't responding or aren't able to meet, then. Uh, I'm sure that they would understand that they, they could create the room for other artists to. To come in and, and meet in, in that Art Commission. So uh, uh, thank you for bringing that up, bringing that up, Councilmember Delgado. I think I'm, I'm in support of. Of uh, uh, we need to discuss more how the Arts Commission is doing and how it flourished. Um, folks were appointed and we had even. A, a number of applicants that we unfortunately had to turn down because we selected five that applied. So. That's where we're at right now.
If I can. Selena, um. I know that the commissioners had brought to your attention that they also wanted to put through a formal process. What is the status on that?
Yeah, actually, uh, it will be brought, brought up at the next meeting. We're going to have the Art Capability Study, which will include um. All of the entire, a comprehensive uh, view of, of just what sort of art is needed for Coachella. And just a process basically, right? And it'll be a very um, community-led uh, process that will involve all stakeholders, including artists. Education, uh, other community-based organizations. And so that will be brought to, you know, at, at the next meeting. Um, so we, that is the hope, um, so that we have a, a more formalized process and so that there's a study that is being conducted about the needs. And that has already been approved by both the council and the Arts Commission. Uh, so that'll just be some items that they will review and discuss so that we can release and, and get that going.
Yeah, I know that they've been waiting on it and they really wanted to provide, you know, uh, more input and more guidance. You know, about the process for artists to come through and also the selection of locations uh, in the city, you know, when. When we're talking about the Pueblo, you know, Viejo revitalization plan that I was a part of many, many years ago as well. You know, it was about specifically targeting certain walls for buildings that were, you know, in, in poor condition. Um, or were very old and, you know, the, the owner wasn't able to make the, you know, updates on it or. You know, put a nicer facade on it. So, you know, the purpose also was to allow, you know, artists to come in and revitalize certain buildings. And so I know that they've been asking and they want to really put through, you know, a good process. Um, and many of them. Uh, or many of the commissioners have a great deal of experience and I'm sure they have a lot of feedback to provide. Thank you.
So, has, has there been a core issue or, or with the Arts Commission or, or why you have they only met twice? Or I, I don't know how many times.
There hasn't been a substantive um, item. Uh, so basically, uh, the Arts Commission is only. Uh, meeting when there are uh, items to consider. And uh, and so we happen to have a culmination of items that needed to be considered. And so we had a meeting and uh, and, but yeah, we, I think we've had a total of three. And uh, but again, uh, there, there hasn't been uh, a, a whole lot of um. You, you know, items being brought forward to, to have like a meeting, you know, so. Uh, we have not had more than three.
Okay, maybe we need to be more intentional about having a schedule, but in December nonetheless, uh, perhaps into new committee, we can um. Uh, study, you know, when we have the reorganization of committees. Um, you know, maybe, you know, we have the process of having everyone reapply for that. So that we can, you know, make sure that maybe we, we're not where we thought we'd go. I know some are open, but it's uncertain which ones are open since. Um, you know, some folks, you know, are either, you know, were appointed by a council member, which is the process that we put forth. But it'd be nice, maybe we, if we sort of uh, you know, could come up with the more purposeful uh, committee and, and, and then. Uh, having a, you know, having an application and being able to study that with a little longer, um, so we can um, have. Uh, you know, folks know that this is something maybe we want to be a lot more involved in rather than meeting a few times a year. But um. Yeah, I mean, I, I want clarification to uh, uh, Carlos, you mentioned we need three votes for this. In case it doesn't go through, can then we make a motion for one? Or, or do we both die? Yeah, so, so say, so there's a motion and a second, and we, all three of us need to vote yes. But say one of them.
Just, Carlos, can you turn your mic on?
So.
Correct. So it's an expenditure fund. You need three affirmative votes.
Three affirmative votes. So, so my question is, so I, I, we're posing right now, I think my, my motion, so that I know if I need to fix my motion or not. My motion is to approve both item thirty-one and thirty-two. If, 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 if it dies, we don't get the three votes, can then we bring forth item thirty-one or item thirty-two for approval?
It would be a separate motion, correct?
You have to go through individually, yes.
I, I, right, I was asking our attorney.
It's if whether or not you want to make the motion to approve two agenda or one.
Yeah, so my motion right now is thirty-one and thirty-two. And so my question is if it doesn't pass, then we can just vote on one. Okay.
You would have to make a separate motion.
Right, so for now, I'll stick to my motion.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Can we get roll call?
So I just need clarification. Is this motion for both items then?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and who did the first motion?
Uh, I did.
I second.
Okay. I'll take roll. Uh, Councilmember Delgado?
No, and to allow one to go to the community.
Okay, Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay then.
And, and Mayor Hernandez is away from the diocese.
Yeah, he's a, he has abstained from this. Uh, he's not, not saying he's, he's, yeah, he's away. A staff, which is the favorite, one of these two that, that you guys want to move forward?
Uh, the US Postal Service mural.
Okay, I'll make a motion to for item thirty-two.
Item thirty-two.
Thirty, was that item thirty-one for the US Postal?
That would be thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, okay. So. We're not going to vote on thirty-one right now. We're voting on thirty-two.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries for this one?
Uh, because I supported two, even though it's going to die, I'm motioning for thirty-one.
Okay. And do we have a second?
We have a.
Motion for thirty-one, yes.
I will second motion thirty, I, uh, item thirty-one.
Councilmember Delgado?
No.
Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez?
Aye.
Does not pass.
Alright, cool.
Can move on to item thirty-three. The mayor will now join us.
This is approval of arts in public places program proposal to restore the Shady Lane Murals by Furtura's Music and Arts.
Yes, that item is mine as well. Let me go ahead and share my screen. And. Starting. Okay, this is item number thirty-three, the restoration of Shady Lane Murals by Furtura's Music and Art. Uh, this item was twice approved by the Arts Commission. And the only reason that uh, it had, um, had to come back a second time is because uh. Uh, there was one mural, uh, uh, there was one new proposed mural that. They, the artist had not submitted uh, a rendition. And so the previously approved and submitted proposal is to restore the existing uh, art murals along Shady Lane between Bagdad Street and Avenue fifty-two. Uh, last November marked the tenth anniversary of the installation of the murals. Uh, each mural that will need to be restored is fifty feet by six feet in size and Furtura's Music and Art intends to clean and reseal. Uh, them with the anti-graffiti sealer. It is the intention of Furtura's Music and Arts to have the original artists work on restoring their respective murals if they are available. Otherwise, other local artists will be sought. The original murals were painted using Nova Color Paint. Which is the best paint product in the industry to use on outdoor murals. Uh, one mural will be completed with new artwork by Alvarez Inc. And samples of this work are featured in the next slide. Uh, so these are the, uh, this is the current depiction of the state of the Shady Lane mural. Uh so these are the uh, this is the current depiction of the state of the Shady Lane mural. And these are work samples by Alvarez Inc. of other artwork that he has uh completed. And this is the new proposed rendering of the mural, uh unfortunately, the artist uh did not see. I I I don't think he had time to color it, but it will be a color uh mural and this will be one of the new uh mural that will be installed. And the total grant funding request is in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. And this concludes uh this presentation for this item.
Motion approved.
Second, but just to point of clarity, this is for the whole restoration of that wall?
Yeah.
A second for motion.
I'll go ahead and take role, council member Delgado? Yes. Council member Galarza?
I.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez?
I.
Mayor Hernandez?
I, we'll move on now to memorandum memorandum of understanding with the twenty-nine palms. Mission Indians in regards to the Dillon Road Corridor Improvement Project.
We do have a written communication for this item, so I can read it after the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the item before you is a MOU with the twenty-nine uh. Twenty-nine Palm Band of Mission Indians for the Dillon Road Corridor Improvement Project. Little background, the twenty-nine Palm Band of Mission Indians is a fairly recognized Indian tribe as empowered and authorized to co- contract on its own behalf. As an independent nation, uh the tribe currently operates Spotlight Twenty-nine Casino in Coachella and Torres Rock Casino located in the city of twenty-nine Palms. Uh both casinos employ over seven hundred people and they provide a lot of uh community uh outreach through tribal contributions and support tribal government operations and programs. The project scope is to enter into agreement with the purpose of establishing the communication and coordination between the tribe and the city. In regards to constructing and maintaining uh portions of Dillon Road within the reservation lands of the tribe. It's not intended to limit or alter hands uh their uh respective jurisdictions on either the tribe or the city. Here are some of the scope items that the the agreement will consider in regards to the Dillon Road uh corridor project. It'll include improving traffic signalization, relocation, signage, and other traffic control devices. Beautification landscaping around the center uh center medians and along the front road frontage. Uh the Dillon Road Bridge Replacement, which we have a JPA with uh both tribes, cabazon included. Lane expansion from four lanes to six lanes, uh improvements to uh Dillon Road Intersections with CB Link Crosswalk and Bike Lanes. Dedicated turning and turn-in and turn-out locations, lanes, construction of new entrance into Spotlight Twenty-nine, improvements of utility infrastructure. And uh inner uh beautifications along the interchange of uh Interstate ten and Expressway eighty-six. Staff recommends approving MOU with the Twenty-nine Palm Band of Mission Indians for this project. And the parties uh commit to engaging in regular government, the government meetings to review the planning, construction, and financial investment for this project. In this time, I'd like to open up for any questions or comments.
Well, I I think the scope of the agreement establishes communication and coordination between the tribe and and Coachella. On construction and maintenance work on portions of Dillon Road within the reservation land of the tribe. And then the, and then further. The agreement does not authorize exchange of currency regardless of the source between the two parties. And then if I'm understanding the agreement is that it doesn't. Make one jurisdiction, have one or or give up any authority or let anyone have any other authority, but. I think the the purpose here is establish communication. That's good.
Motion approved.
I just want to go ahead and read this email for the record since it is be- within the the word count. So that we did give an email from Twenty-nine Palms Band of Mission Indians, this email was forwarded to council before today's meeting. And this is what it states, we are looking forward to working and partnering with the city of Coachella on the beautification project of the Dillon Road. Road corridor, the main roadway through the Twenty-nine Palms Band of Mission Indians Reservation near Coachella, California. And the gateway from I-ten and California Highway eighty-six. This is a road commuters heavily utilizing the eastern Coachella Valley. This alliance will benefit traffic safety and the rapid growth of the region. While providing unique desert landscaping highlighted by the cultural monuments meaningful to the tribe and community at large.
Thank you, there is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second, but uh Mayor Potem Gonzalez, we get a roll call please?
Yes, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Galarza?
I.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez?
I.
Mayor Hernandez?
I. We'll move on now to uh uh council comments, uh council member Delgado?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
You? Council member Galarza?
Yeah, I have comments, uh and and it's to bring forth uh uh a censorship of Councilmember Megan Beeman Jacinto. For her involvement in uh social media posts attacking people in this diocese, community members and staff alike. Uh last week, last week, she posted an uh an an anonymous message on her Instagram story. Accusing Mayor Hernandez of having affairs. The fact that one would do such a thing to another colleague in this diocese is uncalled for. Without regard to the mayor's family, his wife and kids that are old enough to read these messages. Everyone that saw that was wondering why it was posted on her personal or Coachella uh Instagram account a few minutes later. It was later posted on an anonymous account. Uh and it and it and it results, it was a sent to that account and that account later posted it too. And and it was received to that and they were posting a few rumors and just people anonymous messages that are sent to that group. Without regard to anyone's family, wa- without regard to people, community members, that team account has. Posted fat-phobic remarks, has posted classist remarks, making fun of Councilmember Gonzalez's wardrobe. Saying she works at, she shops at Ross, like it's a bad thing. When then I came out and said, you know, I shop at Ross too, what's wrong with that? Another fake account was later created. And then posted a picture of me and my wife at an event, saying, oh, look at this P-word, look at how he dresses, you know, I know you're proud of dressing. Like you 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 shop at Ross, but you know, represent our city, you know, better, this is and that. And, you know, for a long time, this has been going on, these fake accounts have been create, have been on for decades. So more recently, a lot of these fake councils u- used to talk about issues, used to talk about, you know, whether, you know, they were too afraid of coming to the diocese. Coming to public comment or having a conversation with us one-on-one or in a group setting. Uh and these, I think, talk about issues and disagreement with issues, uh and I think it's fair for people to be criticized on issues on. On campaign contributions, I think that's that's very much fair because uh we run for office and and we know that comes with it. I think what's not fair is being accused of affairs, of being shamed for how you dress, of being shamed because of your body weight. Those things are off limits, those things should not have, and nobody like that should have a presence in our city and representing our city, being an example. To people and generations to come. People that want to represent are sitting in this diocese, should treat each other with respect. When the desert sun reached out to both me and Councilmember Megan Megan Beeman Jacinto, there was a question that was asked to her on how did she receive that photo, that screenshot? And how, why did she post it? If you read the article, it says she didn't want, she didn't, she did not address that, that's a simple question. I think if she explains how or why she received that screenshot and then posted it on her own account, accusing of the mayor of having an affair. With with, I think it's a college thing of UCR, I don't know what it what it what it what it what it was about, but nobody really could understand it. But I think that alone of accusing, posting an anonymous story, that alone is is merit of a censorship. To to set president that we shouldn't allow that. Even further, that it was linked to the fake account that has posted memes of elected officials, of staff members, of community members. And no respect and no drawline to their families or their or their history, and I and I know the mayor i- is, you know. Has has, I think all of us have stories of hardship and we share them because we relate to people. The mayor, uh we all know, was raised by his grandparents and these people came after that, they posted a picture of him and his brothers saying. You grew, and making fun of them, saying you guys grew up with no mother. And 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 then for, and nobody has come out and said big comments against these posts. Instead, some of our people in this diocese and other elected officials across the city that were identified in in the desert sun, follow these accounts. Give these accounts views. That's uncalled for, and today we need to set a president like other cities have set presidents, that we're gonna respect each other and we're gonna treat our families like respect. For that reason, in the next city council meeting, we need to censor this person because we should not set up, we should not allow this and should not. Let people go unaccountable for their actions. That's it.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez?
I don't think there's much more I need to say about that. My colleague has expressed himself completely um clear, I, there is, there's no place for this. There just isn't any place for this behavior and it's very clear to me why it occurs. Clearly, there's um, it's politics without any, any kind of um respect. For the loved ones, I, my only assumption is, is that those that are saying it do not respect their own families, do not respect their own children. Because if they are putting out that poison and that ugliness to divide our council, who is working very hard to represent our community. To come in and divide us and then. Throw out that poison, um it's just, it's it's, it's disgusting. It's pathetic and there's no space for this, so I agree with you, um councilman. Galarza said that we do need to censor her, I am in complete agreement with that. And and also, I think it's very important to know who she's supporting in this election. Who is she supporting? Who did she publicly come out and put a big old one-page document who she's supporting? And who is she aligning herself with on this diocese? So it is my assumption if she has those feelings and is putting them out there, that she's in alignment with other people on this diocese. And that is uncalled for. Those are my comments, I also want to say in a positive note, today we did have a beautiful ceremony where we broke ground for a new. Fire department, which we are so excited about, it will create adequate space for our camp, for our fire. Uh men and women, um it will make it a a place that's adequate in space and where they can. Where they can have um the best place possible so that they can continue to protect our communities, those are my comments.
To the city attorney, will I be able to respond when there's comments being made on my behalf?
Uh mayor's gonna speak.
Uh so you you, council member, you had your chance to speak.
Well then, well, comments are being used to be made about me instead of anything to do with the city, so. You know, comments are gonna be made about me, then I should be, have the opportunity to reply.
Sure, 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 I I think we'll we'll continue this, look, I um, I understand both of uh. Uh my colleagues' points up here and and they're respected, it this is uh, it, you know. I I think all of us have the, wanna a point of decorum and and making sure that. That we can work together and 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 work well with one another and certainly when. You know, when none of us expect, you know, council members to treat each other, at least on social media in a certain way and. And if there's, if it particularly when it, when it's kind of like liable, you know, so those are, those are things I'm hoping that, you know, in the future. Uh you know, we're we're all just respectful on social media when it comes to that, those types of things. Politics is a, it's an interesting world, right? Uh it's a, there's a lot of things that get said. Uh and certainly, you know, during these times of campaigns, there is a, there's various views and strategies. And tactics that people use to try to win people over or or try to, you know, gain favor or 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 even admonish or or create.
Destroy signs?
Well, but just, just, just uh, uh you know, do things where where ultimately they they want to get a point across or there's. You know, there's, there's differences or even hate of that, or a strong dislike, and it is what it is, you know what I mean, I've been doing this for sixteen years. I I will just take the time right now, though, and and I do this every election, particularly before. Uh the elections, because nobody knows uh what the community is gonna choose, for me, I've always uh. Uh run and and try to, uh you know, as I serve, is do my best for this community. Uh I have a vision of of making sure that Coachella and its residents get the best and because they deserve it and. And I I'm hopeful that uh as we go forward in Coachella, irrespective of who's on the diocese. That that's always the goal, is to do the best for the community and bring the best for the community. Democracy is a, and 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 elections are, they're, it it's part of the democratic process and campaigns take on a lot of different forms. A lot of different strategies, I I just want to say that for me, uh it's been, it's been an honor. And it's been, you know, one of the the biggest things that uh that I could have ever done when I was twenty-three, when I first got elected and now. You know, I'm 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 thirty-nine, it's been sixteen years, uh the staff uh that is in front of me today. And and those that are in the audience are are watching, you know, we we've done a lot together. Uh we've been able to really uh move Coachella in a direction. In which a a lot of people in this community are proud and I think a lot of people in the Coachella Valley are proud of what we've accomplished together. There's one, there's been one person here that has been with me since day one, that's that guy over there sitting down, he's, he's seen uh. The change, Carlos has seen what has occurred for eighteen, well, sixteen years. And uh and so I want to thank you, Carlos, for doing all your work, we're gonna continue to do our best all the way through. Uh irrespective if we're here or not, we 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 have governed and we have chaired these meetings with with. You know, all of your interests in mind and really wanting to do the the right things and I think we've been successful, whether it be from our budget. Rather it be from, you know, delivering on libraries and and parks and and bridges and and new affordable housing. Uh rather it be uh bringing in a good competent staff and making sure that there's stability, rather it be now. New fire stations and uh a lot of cool things that are happening within the city of Coachella, so we're, we're very, very. Grateful and thankful for everything and let let the politics go where they're gonna go, let the community vote for their, where they're gonna vote. Uh you know, this is the last meeting before the election and I'd just like to say that it's been an honor and it's been amazing. We run a win, we'll do our thing, we'll continue to do, but uh irrespective of the outcome, uh it's it's been an amazing ride. And with that, Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours, uh and we will. Go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to do a few announcements, um I dropped the ball, uh this week is uh Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. And I wanted to bring back a proclamation at the next meeting to honor our code enforcement department for all their hard work and dedication they've. Provided during uh the past fiscal year, uh with your direction, I would like to move that forward forward. Uh other issue uh events, we have the state of the city on November, uh October nineteenth at uh seven thirty AM, please check the. Website, uh if you're interested in getting a ticket, uh we also have movies in the park for the rest of the month on Friday at the Backdome Park at seven thirty. PM, uh as noted, the the October twenty-sixth meeting has been canceled and on a positive note, happy birthday, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Everything. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned, we'll see everybody.